I would like to call the February sixth Beacon City School District Board Meeting to Order. Thank you. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands on its own nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for Vincent Basso, bus driver who just passed away, and also Edward Mancari, retired BHS principal. Thank you. We're going to begin with open to the public. Is there anyone that would like to make a public comment? Seeing none, I'm going to move on. Would you like to make a public comment?
We're surprised.
You know what, it's, the mic is to record the meeting, but it doesn't amplify my voice, so I apologize. I need to speak up.
Okay, I guess why I couldn't hear you. Dennis Pavelock, Barbeacon resident. I'm, I'm still a little in a gray area of this indigenous people, and I wanted to just to give another comment regarding that, if I may. I can't say everyone, but when I say this comment, I'm going to say, I'll, I'll, I'll say the word, I'll choose the word "some." Some people have a shady past, whether it be past or present, and if you dig deep enough, you can find the shady past amongst us all. And I'm talking about Christopher Columbus. I'm not condoning slavery by any chance anyway, no, no shape or form. But when you hear about some of these people who I researched today, and what they've done, it may, you know, the first one is, is, is no, I don't know how many people knew this or not, but Babe Ruth, the iconic baseball player, 714 home runs, was an alcoholic. Go to any major league baseball park in America and ask for a Babe Ruth, you know, for a, to tell about Babe Ruth, they're not going to say, well, tell me that story about Babe Ruth, the alcoholic. You're not going to hear that. Mark Wahlberg was a, was a drug addict, cocaine. Sean Connery, the former 007, said in an interview about, about spousal abuse, they need, the mouthy ones need a quick backhand. Steve Jobs refused his daughter in early years to recognize his daughter early in years. Wesley Snipes went to jail for tax evasion. Rihanna made fun of an online teenager because she liked the dress she saw she was wearing at one of the award shows, so she copied it, not to the extent of exactly, but somewhat copied it, and Rihanna got online and she teased her about it. Jay-Z stabbed a person at a party. Tim Allen, of the Santa Claus fame and Toy Story fame, was caught with 1.4 ounces of cocaine on him and then did jail time. Kiefer Sutherland has multiple DUIs. Kevin Costner tried to build a casino on Native American land, an amphitheater, a golf course, and a, and a steam engine. He never built any of it after, after backlash of the property where he was building it on. So what I'm trying to say, folks, is if you dig deep enough, and some of the, and a lot of people, you'd probably find what I just found, you know, the skeletons in their closet. So I, I don't believe we need a committee formed, Madam President, with this, regarding this. I, I believe we should keep it as Indigenous People Day and Columbus Day on the calendar. No harm, no foul. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dennis. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a public comment? Okay, I'm going to move on to our workshops. Oh, I'm sorry. Vicki, do you mind doing a roll call?
Ms. Flynn?
Delayed.
Mr. Galloway?
Here.
Ms. Key?
Here.
Ms. Kush?
Uh, excuse.
Mr. Sang?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here.
Mr. Wolf?
Here.
Stabler?
Here.
Here. Okay, sorry. Thank you for that. I just like breezed right by it, and Kristen Flynn just walked in as well. We're going to start with Katie Biorde from Sergeant Elementary School with our workshops.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you very much for having me tonight. This presentation is about Sergeant, and I'll carry to it. So went through, and it's always a good every year reminder of like looking at the board goals and how we're meeting the goals. I wanted to start with the things that I consider to fall under the category of excellence. So we've done a lot already in the first six months of school. It's been really great, this new transition to me being at Sergeant. I really love it. And, you know, just some curriculum things that I've been learning a lot about and have been really excited to kind of work with teachers on is foundations, iReady, and Science 21. So, you know, just when I was thinking about some of the things that I know that we're doing really well, and it has been a commitment to these first couple of things. So, you know, our literacy program in our primary grades, foundations, in that video that was just playing in the background, is Mr. Bone doing the foundations alphabet with her students. So, you know, I really like how foundations ties in a lot of sensory stuff to, you know, the early literacy stuff, and I think our teachers have been doing a really good job with implementing it across the grade levels. iReady, I have a couple of slides to just kind of show you some of our data points that we've been working a lot on this school year, so I'll leave that for now. And then Science 21, a lot of our teachers have been getting intense training on the new science standards, and I'm already seeing, they're getting the training and also implementing it at the same time, which is a lot of work for them, but they're doing, they're taking it in stride and they're doing a really good job. Another thing that was new to me going down to the elementary level, but I've been really loving is the responsive classroom. So I love going around in the mornings and seeing all the teachers doing their morning meetings with the kids. And another great layer has been the social emotional learning integration into that. So, you know, I'm really thankful to have Dina as our TOSA, in that TOSA position where she works with the classes and has a push-in model, and it's fitting, to my, yeah, fitting really nicely in with our responsive classroom. I can totally see how what's built in our morning meetings kind of trickles through into the classroom culture throughout the day, and I'm hoping to keep growing it, just like my teachers are. They're really invested in it. And, you know, I could see, you know, just getting bigger and better and kind of spreading out throughout the building. So we've really been leaning in a lot on that to try to improve the culture, because there's always room for improvement with the culture. The event that I'm really excited about that's coming up, I've been working with my building leadership on getting it off the ground, is a steam fair. So we started a couple weeks ago. We sent the application out to our students, and basically the premises in grades K through five, students can come up with some type of invention, some type of, you know, we added art, a visual arts element to it, so there's different categories for them to enter their project into. But the goal is at the end of the, like, towards the spring, we're going to have a big steam fair where students will, who have worked on this project for a couple of months, present the project to their peers, but also, you know, present it to their parents at night. And we closed the application window on Friday the third, and we have over 30 applications, and the project was really exciting. So the application was very extensive. It required, you know, the students to consult with their teacher, and then ultimately, I think we're going to get some pretty cool stuff. So that's something to, you know, look forward to, I guess. You guys can kind of follow along as we, we work on that. Also, another thing that is new this year at Sergeant is we established a student leadership team. So aside from student council, it's a, another group of student leaders who kind of work with me a lot. I meet with those students to try to hear their feedback and kind of give them, you know, an outlet to kind of tell me about things that they want to see improved in the school. What was really cool is right off the, from the beginning at our first meeting, I walked away with a lot of things to do after our first meeting, but one of the things was they wanted to have a place for students in the whole school to put their ideas. So we created a little idea box, and what we do when I meet with those student leaders is we check the box to see if there's any feedback from other kids in the school, and then, you know, they also tell me what they've been thinking since last time we met. But that has been really instrumental in my decision-making and early on in some of the new things that I was trying to bring to Sergeant. And two of the clubs that we started, new clubs, because I really wanted to try to expand some of our club offerings, Newspaper Club, the K20 murals, and actually the Lego League, were three clubs that kind of were generated from those students in the leadership team seeking input from the greater student body on what they want to see in clubs, and we were able to make it happen. So I thank you guys for all the support, because that really made the students kind of see how giving their input and doing it the right way and, you know, kind of how all that works. And it was really exciting to see, like, our newspaper club, which, you know, the whole thing was student-created, just put out their first edition of their newspaper, and it was a really good read. So I posted it on the website, so if you ever get a chance and you want to just read just all positive news, read Sergeant. You won't be disappointed. And the last thing that I'm pretty excited about is a bunch of our teachers got grants at the beginning of the school year. I got two grants that have really helped us bring a lot of new trips and experiences to the kids. I had two grants through the community foundations, one to bring a group of fourth and fifth graders to the eContender Sports in Waukenters, where our esports team goes, and they're going to do like a two-hour coding lesson with them about how, like, the backend of coding with Roblox. So all I had to do was say Roblox, and the kids were like done. And then we also got a grant to bring Math Science. Unfortunately, Math Science of Mid-Hudson closed, so Math Science of Westchester has kind of taken over their jurisdiction, but, so Math Science is going to be coming in to do some really cool workshops with grades two, three, and four. And then the foundation is supporting us. One of my teachers wrote a grant for, to bring kids to the Lego Discovery Center, so that's coming up, and the second grade is doing that. The fourth grade is going to the Hudson River Museum in Yonkers, which is aligned with their, like, social studies curriculum. So I was really happy to see how eager the teachers were to kind of put the work in to, you know, get that funding, so we can increase the amount of trips and experiences. So that's been really fun. Communication has been one thing that I've been trying to streamline at Sergeant. The, we've been trying to do a lot. I began sending out bi-weekly newsletters. Had to come up with something just as catchy as the Monday message. So the best I could do is a Sunday scoop. A little cheesy, but it's growing on me. And, you know, trying to tie everything in, so like when we send out newsletters, trying to link that stuff to social media and the website, just to kind of make sure that people can see our, the, you know, information that we put out on a variety of platforms. Been sending out, trying to keep up consistent communication with the staff, that's, you know, not just, you know, we need you to do this, we need you to do this, more just like trying to improve the culture of like communication as far as like staff and what things get communicated, how. We've also been really focused on amping up like the usage of our homepage, like our Sergeant website. It kind of felt like going in that there was not a lot that people could really go see on our school website, so we've been trying to link and direct everybody to that one spot when they're looking for information. Some examples of that is we've been maintaining a, like a live club calendar and a day cycle calendar. I learned really quickly that the day cycle is a big stressor in the morning for elementary parents. I never really cared about the A or B days at the secondary level, because it's like I always did the same thing, and, you know, kids at that age are pretty good with remembering if it's an A or B day, but at the younger grades, I can totally see why forgetting if it's art or gym could be like a big morning struggle. So that was, you know, something that we did early on, and that seems to be really helpful for parents. Another added thing to the website is we began to do Google Forms for digital attendance notes. Another thing I realized in how I mentioned school is there's a lot of notes. There's a lot of notes coming down, you know, to the main office, which is great, but Mrs. Keyson also has to like maintain really good records, so we wanted to give people another option. You know, if it's easier just to send a digital attendance notes, we now accept those too. And, you know, also trying to have more evening events and open up the school more for people to connect and, you know, see each other and be together and have access to me. Go to the P2 meetings, that's a good access point for parents to see me, but, you know, we also are trying to plan some other night events, you know, so people can come into the building more, because I think when they come in and they see all the great things that we do, they'll, you know, be able to explain all the great things that we do when they... So I am going to talk a little bit about our TSI designation. So as you guys know, Sergeant was designated as a school in the Year of Improvement. So before that, I just wanted to talk a tiny little bit about some iReady data that we've been looking at and examining a lot as a building. So we just closed out the mid-year diagnostic. So we do an assessment in math and reading three times a year. First, we do a math and a reading in September, and we just finished the mid-year assessment, and what you're looking at is the building-wide report for how students showed growth. So on the math side, on the left, that little bar at the top, that 42%, what that shows is that 42% of the students at Sergeant met iReady's mark for showing growth. So that doesn't mean that only 42% of people, students showed growth. It means that they met iReady's, and it's different for each grade level, but it met the benchmark that iReady would set for what growth looks like. So in reading, you can see that we did a little better. We did a lot better. 82% of our students met iReady's benchmark for growth in reading. Further down, you can see how it's separated out by grade in the building. So the 42% is the overall, but then for the building-wide, it's, I guess, the best, the grade that showed the most growth in math was fifth grade. The grade that showed the least is second grade. Second grade is showing about 28% of students met iReady's benchmark for growth in math. Reading exponentially is, is higher in all grade levels, and, you know, fourth grade showed the highest growth. Fourth grade is actually off the charts, where it's showing growth in, in reading, and first grade is at like that 65-ish mark.
A question, I'm sorry. So, so you also have, it's like, I guess, four, four sectors, like, do you want to be, I guess you want to be in the high-performance, high-growth sector? Is that the goal too, or?
Yep, like where fourth grade is on the reading?
Yeah.
That's the, that's where, you know, we want to be. So the, what we really want is, is for students to, from September to June, show, you know, maintain their grade level, but wherever they're at. So whether they're below grade level or on grade level, we want them to continue moving forward. So even if they're above grade level, we expect that by the end of the year that they're higher than that. So we want the students to kind of just keep moving in the right direction. A little bit more broken down is, so I took these two, so the, the highest and lowest on each side for the building and just went into it a little deeper. So for, for math, the, the two, what's highlighted in red there and what's highlighted in blue, the red is students who, so in grade two, 25% of our students met iReady's benchmark for, for growth. And the blue is what they call stretch growth. So that means that 17% of students are, who are below grade level, showed a lot of growth. So they met their stretch growth, which is a really good indicator that students who are not performing at grade level are using the tool the right way, and if they stay on that trajectory, that they will then, you know, get closer and closer to, to that, to that mark. You know, why we look at this is because we want to just kind of always check to make sure that, you know, where we need to improve. So, you know, I looked at this and I went over this, these two exact slides of the faculty today, the faculty meeting. You know, we got to dig a little bit deeper into second grade, right, and kind of see, you know, how much time the students are spending on their individualized plan within iReady. So we have the whole class lessons, but we also have individualized lessons that, you know, we can kind of see how much time is being put into that. So, you know, those are the conversations that we want to have at, you know, grade level meetings, or just kind of at bigger faculty meetings, and we're analyzing this kind of data and just try to, you know, increase the amount of time put into these lessons to just keep kind of moving the kids forward.
It'll be interesting to see if, across the district, if second grade is a challenge at all buildings, because that would be the three years of the pandemic, starting in kindergarten first, and, or like maybe affected by pre-K.
Yeah, it would be. Definitely something to look at.
I was just looking at it.
Yeah, but it's, it's really good, like, well, at the faculty meeting today, we, there's like a checklist that iReady has a ton of resources, and there's a checklist that is like a conversation starter between like administrators and teachers on like, you know, because when you click on like grade one, as a teacher, you can see all your students, and you can see each student and how exactly, you know, where they're, like how, breakdown of how they're showing growth, or if they're not showing growth, and, you know, there's a lot of information and just like taking the time and having those conversations and, you know, like I said, the exercise with kind of debriefing it all, because, you know, we've had a lot of interruptions with school, and, but now I feel like we're really at a point where, especially with this, you know, we had 100% of our students take the test and take it, and they've all, this isn't the first time that they took it, so we're pretty confident that, you know, it's not a, anymore, we don't really have to worry too much about user error, I guess. Like, I mean, we're really in a flow now with doing it, so we're pretty confident that it's pretty valid from September, and we're pretty confident with, you know, our second measure now. So I think we're really in a place now where we can really use this data to really inform the instruction, especially with the individualized plans for reading and math. So going along with this, you know, we, for the targeted school designation, we looked at the SEP plan, and I have a SEP team that I've been working with to just kind of make sure they were meeting the commitments to the plan. And an idea that came out of it is one of the things that we were cited for was like welcoming community and having resources for parents, you know, and also just like the communication piece between parents and families, and not just about like what's happening at school, but how to help your kid at home. It seems like through the survey data and basically what was written in the plan is that there needs to be some improvement where like parents can better understand how to help their students at home, and it really are missing that, that piece for like, that communication from a teacher about how to help their student, like, be successful. So...
I just want to jump in for one second. That came from the family surveys that we did. So that wasn't the state citing us for that, that, they just used the test scores, but they require us to do a survey, and we did a few, and so a lot of that came from the surveys we did a few years ago.
So, yeah, so when we were going through that survey data and the SEP team, and I wasn't a part of it initially, but I was at Rombout, so I was pretty familiar with the process, and we, you know, I looked at the survey data and, you know, and the commitments that were made in the plan, and Born was this night. So we are upcoming on February 23rd. We're having what we're calling a family resource night, and I'm really excited about it. It's really coming together nicely. What's pretty much going to happen is we have a bunch of breakout sessions that are run by teachers. So they came up with, you know, I put it out to teachers to kind of bring their ideas about what you would want to see on a night like this, and they came back with a lot of really, really interesting stuff. And I think overall, when you look at the, the topics that are going to be presented on, I think it's a really all-encompassing, you know, night, and would be really helpful for parents. So, you know, we wanted to have a big curriculum piece, so we have an overview of foundations. The idea there is that parents can go to that session and walk away with some, like, understanding the lingo that is used. So if they wanted to help support, not that they're going to go home and teach a foundations lesson, but if they wanted to like understand what we're talking about when we say skyline and plane line and worm line and all of that, or like the things their kids are probably saying when they're practicing their stuff at home, they'll know what it is. You know, we're doing a session, we have Ms. Benson, and one of my fifth grade teachers is doing a session dedicated to the fifth to sixth grade transition, and just like all you need to know. And it's really great to have like a fifth grade teacher and a sixth grade teacher there to answer parents' questions. We have a therapist from the community coming in, and she's doing a session on how to build your child's self-confidence and self-esteem, a whole session on an organization. Dina Morrow and my social worker, Ms. Cortina, are going to be putting parents through an actual morning meeting, so their session is going to be, come in, sit down, pretend you're a student, and we're going to do a morning meeting to kind of understand the, like, components of it and how it really trickle, does trickle out into the, you know, school community. We also have two teachers doing a session on math, like tips and tricks to how to build and foster like a positive relationship with math, and also like, you know, how to, what kind of little things you can do at home to just kind of help your student be successful when it comes to math. Library and Media Specialist, and I actually went to a training that was similar to this, and we kind of took a lot from that, and it's tweens living with computers. And it was very eye-opening. I learned all about ChatGPT, Matt brought it up the other day. It was very informative, but the takeaways were, you know, that, a lot about the computer science standards, but also how we can really support digital fluency and kind of get students prepared, which seems like a hard concept for our teachers, and it's like, you know, you're really trying to get students prepared for jobs that don't exist now. So, you know, just kind of telling parents a little bit about that, and, you know, how we can, you know, support that at home. We also have, the speech language department is going to do a presentation on Read Alouds, and how like, you know, teachers do read books to their students beautifully, and there's all those tips and tricks that they put into the Read Alouds that really foster early language. And they're going to like do a demonstration and kind of show parents how they can do that at home with their kids. We also are going to open up, or have like a workstation to onboard more parents onto Parent Portal. So we have, you know, we have the numbers of who, and we know who does and doesn't have Parent Portal accounts, and we know who did and didn't fill out the new user or returning student registration form. So we're going to try to target, we sent letters with this packet to those people to try to encourage them to come, so we can like support them in person with creating those accounts. And then, really helpfully, Mr. Cobal and Mr. Zener are going to kind of solve the childcare issue of the night by having the students who come with their parents for the night kind of be a part of a demonstration, really. Ryan has been implementing sports, like a sports ed model. I'm sure Mr. Jim, I may reference that in his presentation, but it's kind of like the curriculum for phys ed, and how they teach, you know, all different roles and aspects of sports in class, and they're going to use the kids that show up for the night for childcare purposes in, in that demonstration. So the kids should have fun, and the parents should learn a lot. So we're really excited about this. A lot of, you know, effort and manpower has gone into it and support from you guys to make it happen. So we're looking forward to it, and if anybody wants to stop by on the 23rd, the building will, will be there.
Will these all be running simultaneously?
No. So parents will pick three sessions to attend. We try to, so if you could see like the target audience for each, so we, when we make the schedule, we kind of imagined it as having we kind of imagined it as having like certain tracks, like there's going to be certain sessions that only a primary parent will probably go to and we're going to not offer those at like the same time. So parents have choice in what they want to go to. And we're going to, I'm going to, all the teachers who made their presentations, I have access to them. So we're also going to post those.
That's what I was going to ask, because sometimes somebody has more than one kid in a grade. They might be have like an older kid having some challenges and but still want to deal with the younger. But that would be great if the presentations are all available.
Yeah, so we're on the case.
Is this, is this aimed at families in Sargent or are all families in elementary families?
Right now, it's only families for Sargent.
Okay.
But, you know, I think, you know, we're funding this through the money that we got for being at School Need of Improvement.
Right.
So I think, you know, we'll take, we'll almost kind of like be the pilot for doing something like this and then figure out how much it costs to put on a night like this. Go from there. And then maybe we can emulate it at the other schools or maybe we join forces and we do one big elementary one. I think, you know, we'll test it out, see how it goes. And but, you know, I was really, really happy with the teachers who came up with these like amazing topics. So and it definitely wouldn't happen without them. We're giving up their night to to do it.
True. It's fantastic. I would love to see, see this for like district wide. It's amazing.
So two more slides. So other things that we've just been doing at Sargent that I'm pretty excited about. We started a program at the beginning of the year as like a vision for implementing the diverse book sets that the curriculum office brought to, you know, gave us. So every teacher and every grade level got a box of books, like really, really great books that are really diverse and really inclusive of, you know, of everything. And we kind of were just like trying, I was working on this on the equity team, is how are we going to use these? So we came up with the book of the month and every month, you know, we use books and they're all different at each grade level, but they're all kind of common themes. So we've done themes like Hispanic heritage, we did bullying prevention. We did, well, this month is Black History Month. You know, we're just going to kind of keep going with the months. But, you know, we have, my equity team put out a like a presentation where they have discussion questions. And basically, once a month, across the grade level, in morning meeting, teachers are reading books that are aligned to the same theme and discussing like the same theme and and then kind of going deeper into it through their morning meeting activities. So it's been really cool to pop in and see, you know, the students. The video that's playing in the background was the first week of school, we started off with, and we were really excited to have him come do it, but Elijah Hughes came and he read A Little Spot of Belonging. And it was, you know, really my first meeting with a lot of these students. And it was just like a good way to start off the year. So the whole book was about making friends and being nervous in new situations. And Elijah did a really great talk to the kids about how he has to travel around and he moves around and he's nervous and he's an NBA star. So like, you know, it was a really good way to start the year and, you know, then that was like our first book of the month. We've also been, like I said, really mindful of trying to bring experiences and trips and come up with creative ways to pay for them all. But, you know, one thing that I did early on, which, you know, I just wanted to make sure that we were kind of equitable amongst the grades with experiences and trips. So, you know, if, you know, we're looking at kindergarten and first and second and just making sure that everybody had a couple of things that they could look forward to and be excited about throughout the school year and kind of spreading them out so they weren't all happening in May and June. So I think we have done a really nice job with that. And I actually told the faculty at the faculty meeting today that like, the deadline's coming up, like buses are getting booked. Like, we need to make sure that nothing, if you want to go somewhere or you have something in mind or there's something you've always done, I need to know about it so we can make sure that, you know, we can make it happen. So, you know, streamlining that and just making it equitable across the grade levels was important. We've also been combining with some other schools, which has been cool. Like, we have been working with the other elementary principals to try to create some assemblies that are, and shared experiences with all the schools. So in May, we have a group coming from Theater Works to do Pout Pout Fish. Do you know Pout Pout Fish?
Yes.
I learned all about Pout Pout Fish. Apparently, I'm going to be a really, really cool principal. The, so all four elementaries are getting together here at the high school. And they're going to see a play through with, from a really great group, Theater Works. And we did something similar in the beginning of the year with a bullying assembly. We brought all the elementary schools together in grades three to five. And we just kind of look forward to creating more experiences like that for all the kids. The other things related to this is, you know, we've also in the beginning of the year, and it's a constant conversation at faculty meetings is having conversations, trying to get our know, get to know our families really well. And that paid off because we learned, after I asked, you know, kind of teachers a couple of times to reach out to their families to find out what kinds of things that they celebrate, we found out that a lot of students at Sargent celebrate Lunar New Year. And we had a big Lunar New Year celebration. And, you know, that was something that I didn't, I wouldn't have thought of. You know, when you're planning out the year of what things you're going to celebrate and stuff. So I'm really glad that the teachers had those conversations and we knew because it was a really cool day. We had a couple of celebrations, the specials, all for one week, did a lot of stuff related to Lunar New Year. Art did a big project where they created paper lanterns. PE taught the students how to play like Dragon Tag and they taught the fan dance, which I thought was really, really cool. And then music, you know, did a lot of different stories and stuff. We had some parents come in and read some books about Lunar New Year and it was, it was pretty good. So I mentioned that again at the faculty meeting today, just kind of reminding them of how cool that was. You know, like we wouldn't have known that if we didn't ask and we have to do more of that and we have to keep doing more of that so we can just make sure they're in touch with what is important to our community. And then lastly, I already mentioned the student leadership team in the idea box. But one more layer to that is students have also started to report at PTO meetings. So just like you, student leaders are here, we're starting that really early on with the little ones. And we've been having them give student reports at PTO meetings. And it's very interesting to see like the differences. I really, really like having their input at it because, you know, what seems to be like, I just want them to be like at the forefront of telling the people who are making decisions what they want, you know? So we could all talk about what we think they want, but if there's something better than hearing from them in the moment where we're talking about like making decisions, like exactly, you know, what they want to do and see and, you know, how they want their winter vest to look like and, you know, all that stuff. So we've got a, a couple of things that come out of that. Like, for example, at our last PTO meeting, the students indoor recess came up and the students had a lot to say about indoor recess and what they want to do in indoor recess. And so after that conversation, the students came back to school and they said, we're going to do a survey. We're going to survey all the classes and the PTO said they'll buy us some games for indoor recess. So we're going to find out what games they want, you know, the student body wants to have. So they did it, they made the survey. They collected all the data, they sorted the data and gave me a list of five games every grade wants to see an indoor recess. So that all happened in like three days. They're very efficient. They, you know, and I really want to keep fostering that kind of stuff because, you know, it's their school and we want it to reflect them, you know, from everything they do, not just, you know, the fun things, but also like their academics. And that's been really important. And we also, so that picture is my student leadership team. They are a really fun group. Again, they give me a lot of work, but it's all good. And then we also want to find ways, I've tried to find some more ways to recognize kids. So we started the Star League, which is just a, teachers can nominate. We pick two students each week and then can nominate them for a bunch of different criteria. So it can be for kindness, it could be for academic achievement, it could be for overcoming adversity. Really, there's a lot of different categories, but they nominate students. And then I have a little committee that picks each week and it's been really fun. I really like it. And then lastly, we've been, we're always striving to be more sustainable. We love our land to learn program. It is really great. They do such a great job and the kids love it. So I love seeing the mountain garden and even in the winter, they're doing, you know, lots of activities with students in class. We did expand our environmental club. So before this year, it was only a three through five club and we added a K through two because the interest was really, really high. So that has been really great. We're also working with a group to create two pollinator pathways at Sargent, which will be a really fun project to kind of oversee in the spring. And then I guess my legacy as a Vegas City School District, we use bins because I'm bringing them everywhere. So we have to use again bins. We got rid of, we, there were, there was a textile donation bin at Sargent. I just, to be honest, I just didn't like the way it looked. It was really dirty and beat down. And I was like, there's nothing nicer than those using them bins. So I like their mission. And I talked to the environmental club about it. They were all about it. I like, I don't want to like sound like a salesperson for using them, but I really do like how engaged they are with the students because they do a lot of like, like contests and things that the environmental club can kind of use. And they have a lot of resources for kids to kind of learn. And then an example of that is they do a really big Earth Month project. So our environmental club is gearing up to do like a cleanup and like a big push for people to bring, you know, donations and stuff to Sargent. Brings me to the end.
Thank you.
I have a, thank you for including a special section on the parent portal. I think it's continues to be something of an underused tool. So I'm glad you have somebody who's teaching about it. Do you have any statistics in terms of how many people actually use that? And how many there are that have yet to sign on or find out the usefulness of it? By the way, it's great that it's important to do this in the elementary grades because you're not only teaching the students, you're teaching the parents how to use this. And if they get it right now, they'll be able to use it all the way through twelfth grade.
Yeah, that's exactly right. And I've seen that because, you know, I have, I see, I saw it from the secondary perspective as an assistant principal. And then I do agree with you. I think it's really underused at the elementary. But I do have the statistics, not offhand, but we can access that information. And Kim Savali does a really good job of letting us know kind of that information all the time so we can use it to improve it. But I think as we get more people onboard, then we can start using it more because we're kind of in this just limbo little area where people don't see the value in it because there's nothing really to check. But we don't put things on it because we know not everybody has it. So we're just like, I think by the end of the year, as we keep working on it, I think we could be in a place where we could rely on it more.
Our goal. It's like anything online, it has to be updated all the time where people don't pay attention to it.
Yep.
Our, our goal is to share out some important information to elementary parents through the portal next summer so they kind of know they have to go in to do it. That said, I'm not sure it will work for elementary students like it will for a secondary. You know, like just the nature of the way elementary teachers teach. It, it, you know, it's just not going to be exactly the same, but we are making a huge push to get parents on. And I will admit that my wife and I were not signed up for a long time. But we did this year.
I know. I was like, is she looking at me?
When, when we, when we actually did sign up, I think shockwaves went through the technology department and that we did. But, but it's kind of like the elementary parents, it's not a huge need for it in terms of what we are currently doing. We're trying to change that, but there's a huge effort right now to get people signed up.
This presentation was amazing.
It was great.
It really was. There's so much on here that I'm like, oh, I want all of the elementary schools to do this. It was great.
Yeah, it was, it was really great. You had me at the STEAM fair, actually. So you had me really early. I mean, I've, I, I, I've been, I've been trying to talk up some people to get, to try to get a science fair going and, and STEAM fair is a great idea.
You better come over when we have it, you can see the projects.
As a sergeant parent, one of the things I do really like about how you designed it is that it doesn't, it feels like it touches across a lot of areas so that I, I think that, that it, even though these things overlap, it creates a potential for kids to see like, oh, there's something I could do. It kind of, it was a lower barrier for them to get past and they could then come up with an idea rather than just thinking like I have to specifically do an experiment. Having that engineering or design element to it was, I think, really helpful.
You know, we want it to be really inclusive in the, the day and, you know, the whole STEAM fair overall, so.
Is it something that, where students can work on their projects in during the school day? Is there room for that?
So we have, the majority of the projects is going to be completed at home. We are, I'm working with a PTO and my teachers to kind of come, almost like the foundation is kind of doing a film test. Try to have some like time designated for some like workshops leading up. Right now, like we closed the window for applications on Friday, so I'm going to review those over this week and kind of see what we're up against, like what kind of projects are coming in and then try to plan out, you know, that going forward. I haven't yet, but I, my mind is going to like maybe, you know, the high school kids maybe coming down and like working with elementary kids on, on working on their project. And then we also kind of have to see what kind of resources they need, like what things that they want to have for their project, but maybe if they can't, you know, get those things at home, like how we can provide it for them instead. So we're trying to be mindful of that, too. And then, you know, as we kind of live through it one time, we try to improve it for the next year with that. Because the goal is really to get as many kids to participate as we can.
The charts that you've just played, iReady does that?
Yeah.
Oh, wow. Okay.
Yeah, it's a very powerful tool.
So the question about doing it across the schools, I mean, that's just punching some buttons, right?
Yeah. We'll, we'll, we'll pull that up.
There's about over twenty eight different reports that iReady will give you.
All right. And, and the TSI, if you could remind me, I'm sorry, because it's actually like been, it's almost like been forever since we've been on that list. Is it, is it something that's, the, the goal is to, I guess, to try to get off the list or just?
Yeah.
And how long does it take or?
This year, I believe, it's based, as Matt mentioned earlier, it's based on New York State test scores. So, you know, when we hope, you know, we're transitioning to a new mode of testing. So for fourth and fifth grade, we're moving to computer-based testing. We did a simulation earlier in January and it went great, no problems at all. And so I don't think it's going to be like a huge transition for the kids. I think they're more than ready. I don't personally think it's going to affect how they're going to do on the test, but, but it is a difference. And, you know, it's kind of based on that. So, you know, we hope we can get, you know, part of the parent resource night, I'm going to talk a little bit about that shift in testing and I'm going to talk about, you know, the school need of improvement with the parents and just try to, you know, encourage as many, you know, or kind of de, I don't want to say demystify, but we're going to talk a little bit about testing and how, you know, when we, we want students, we're not going to tell parents whether the kids should or shouldn't take the test, but we, you know, want as many that can to take it because it does hurt us for this if, you know, we have a lot of students that don't, that refuse the test.
The, you know, it's, it's almost like a double edged sword. I mean, it, it's, it's, the, the, the designation does come with extra funds though, right?
Yes.
But it's not a designation that, that's particularly kind.
No, you don't want to stay there.
Yeah.
Because then it comes in with oversight if you continue to be on the list.
I see.
If you want to get off the list, then eventually you lose autonomy.
Okay.
So even though we get extra fun, you want to get off.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you so much, Katie.
Thanks.
Thank you.
John.
Are there videos in the back of your slides, John?
No.
That was very cool.
Five year goal.
I would like a lesson in that.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to be going over some, some of the accomplishments that we were able to achieve in the past year, as well as some planning that we have for the future. By all means, everybody, please stop me, ask questions. Feel free to just get it off your head and sort of wait until the end. We had a very exciting past couple of years here at Beacon with our athletic programs. And a nice thing about it is that we're continuing to make history with a lot of the accomplishments that we're making with our program. So starting out with our scholar athlete teams, one of the five-year goals that I'll talk about later was to be a school distinction, meaning every one of your athletic teams has a grade point average of 90% or above. While we don't have every one of our varsity teams from our fall/winter sports on this list, we're only missing a couple. I'm happy to say that they are very, very close to reaching that 90% grade point average. We're basically in the mid to upper eighties with those other programs. So once again, I'm hoping in the future, we can get on that school distinction. Very highly sought out of being a high school sport or a high school program in New York State. From here, just going back and kind of reviewing some of the things. I know during Dr. Landau's presentation that he made in the past at the board meeting, talking about some of the accomplishments, I did want to note some of the big things that we had going on. Starting with our boys soccer program with their sectional, regional championships and state championship finalists. Once again, first time in Beacon history that we were able to reach the state championship game in boys soccer. Girls soccer, come to find out, we won our first sectional game in over 30 years this past season. The last time that an actual sectional game was won is in our 1989 state championship year. So quite a big accomplishment for that program as well. Moving to cross country, having Henry and Rachel qualifying for the state championships, which is a wonderful thing. And then girls tennis, for the first time, we had three teams qualify for sectional play. And it was also the first time we had any girls team qualify for sectional play, let alone three. And we're lucky enough to have one of those tennis athletes here, Ari, congratulations. And to the rest of the athletes, congratulations, once again, making school history from year to year, which is a beautiful thing. Going on to our winter sports, we are in the midst of the season, so nothing is final. But just a couple of notes I wanted to mention. This year, we were able to host a 20-year reunion of the 2003 section championship team. It was a very powerful day that we had on a Saturday. Patrick Shetter, our varsity coach, was able to invite all of our alumnis into the gym. We had a wonderful packed gym for our JV and varsity basketball game. And after talking to Patrick, I think next year, we're going to try to do a quadruple header and maybe have all four teams of the boys basketball program. And then we also talked with Coach Dahl on girls basketball. We want to try to have a full day of basketball, really get the community involved to celebrate the accomplishments and what we're doing. So great job by Patrick, organized that day and having alumni there. I think John was there. We had a lot of gold, Beacon history there, beautiful thing. Girls basketball, Coach Dahl had her 200 win, was also the winner of the Battle of the Tunnel versus Hal Dane. The picture on the far right, while it's small, trying to fit a lot of stuff in, no moving pieces, unfortunately. But the picture on the right, that's every one of the athletes from both the Beacon and Hal Dane JV and varsity programs, as well as our CYO programs. I thought that was a very powerful picture, coming together with two communities so close to one another. And it was just a great, powerful day for all of us. The boys basketball team, we went down to Hal Dane this year, despite having a limitation on our spectators. There wasn't a seat left in the house. And that was a great job that Hal Dane did, continuing the battle of the tunnel tradition for the boys team as well. And then varsity wrestling, this is the first time that we've been able to host a bulldog wrestling tournament since before COVID. We've had our obstacles with wrestling, especially when it comes down to the safety. And I feel like some people were a little apprehensive about enrolling in wrestling, considering it's such a close contact sport. But I'm happy to report that the tournament went off great. We had about six athletes competing for the championship of each of their weight class. I put a bunch of things out on Twitter and you'll see some other pictures in the slides later with the accomplishments that our Beacon wrestlers were able to make. But just the, it, it's nice getting back to normal with things. And hopefully, in the way that things are looking, I should be able to report some new school history with the success of our winter programs for next year or in sessions to come. So despite all the wonderful things that Mrs. Beordy has been able to do at Sargent, she's still able to lend me a hand and help construct our girls and sports day. This year, we had over 150 girls throughout the district participate in the day. One thing that we did different this year, rather than bring in all the college coaches and college teams, we talked to our varsity girls teams and varsity girls programs here at Beacon. We were able to have all of the coaches from our varsity girls team volunteering themselves on an entire Saturday to work with all of our Beacon athletes. In addition, there are athletes on each of their teams came and helped to run the sessions. And, you know, looking back at it, it was a great moment for Beacon and just trying to promote female athletics, having so many people involved. In the picture on the top, you'll see our athletes in the front, all the staff members alongside. It was a full house here and it was just a great day for Beacon. And you'll see in further slides, we are actually boosting our numbers in female athletics, which is the whole point of doing this day. And also a special shout out to Karen Pagano and her food service team. She does such a wonderful job putting out the spread for everybody and coordinating the food that we have here. And then Lauren Shetter, who was a Beacon grad and a Pace University basketball player. Each year during the lunch portion, we try to have a guest speaker, someone who's a representative of Beacon, come back and speak to the girls about staying involved in inner class sports and the benefits that the students will get from that. So once again, we're going above and beyond. And we actually have, and I'll call them out, we have a little bit of a copycat in the area. The Cornwall Central School District has run their first girls, I'm good friends with their athletic director. So, but no, I'm great to see other communities starting to celebrate female athletics and promote female athletics. We even talked about possibly collaborating in the future and looking into doing something like that. So once again, some great things that we're doing for our athletes. Other things that we've been doing, our unified bowling team. This is the first time in Beacon history that we're able to put a unified bowling team together. These athletes, this is a 100% sanctioned New York State sport. This is an official varsity sport for these athletes. So the athletes that enroll in the program will be receiving a varsity letter. Our seniors are getting banners on the wall. This is the real deal. And I'm happy to say we were able to get this program up and running. Our team members this year, Crystal Dembo, Anastasia DeCarlo and Cudi Wanzar. Our student helpers, Megan Nicholson and Vanessa Campanelli, and our coaches, Mike Mullins and Sydney Pomerico. They are competing in over six bowling matches against other school districts. Tomorrow, they have a match over in East Fishkill. And Thursday, they have a match up in, across the street in Newburgh at Tarshill Lanes of Newburgh versus NFA. So it's great to see them out in competition. We're getting some great response from it. The hope is that we can continue to increase the numbers that we have in this program. And I am happy to say that during the spring, we are going to enroll into unified basketball, which is going to be actual basketball competitions in our gym. The coaches for that are going to be Patrick Shetter, our current varsity coach, and Mike Mullins helping out with that as well. So we're trying to get everybody in the school district involved as much as we can and give them these great genuine athletic opportunities.
I'm sorry, can you remind me why it's called Unified though?
So Unified, it's basically intended for students with disabilities. And the way that the program is structured is that these students with disabilities are also going to be competing with general ed students to help run the activities. So on the basketball, for instance, there'd be three students with disabilities on the court one time with two general ed students who are helping the game flow. And it's intended for the students, that population, to get these authentic experiences like everybody else would be able to.
That's great. Thank you.
Yeah. The Beacon Hall of Fame ceremony, this year we had some, some wonderful inductees. The track and field program that we had in 2016 with Rayvon, Terrell and David. Our 1973 and 74 basketball teams, and then finally Lauren Shetter and Gaddy Lucas. A couple of years ago, we changed the venue to, to a dinner format, which we felt was a little bit more intimate and it was very special for everybody who was able to attend. We are going to continue up with this tradition once again. Katie Beordy assisting me with securing the venue and all the legwork that goes into it. But overall, it's a wonderful thing to have all these past athletes in, back in Beacon at one time and really celebrate their achievements. School spirit, pep rally back in the gym, fireworks, ball team recognitions. Our student tailgate was chugging along. Our homecoming court, our homecoming dance, thanks to Mr. Dwyer and his staff for helping run the homecoming dance this year in the, in the Beacon High School gym. I think we had over 400 students attend this from Beacon High School. So Mr. Dwyer really helped, you know, make sure that that was staffed and did a great job with everything. And then also, we're really trying to make steps to get more involved with the community. Spirit of Beacon Day Parade, I'm happy to say that we had each of our varsity programs represented in the Spirit of Beacon Day Parade. And we're also going to try to booster that a little bit more and possibly get on top of a couple more floats and maybe win a float championship down the road. I don't know. We're going to mess around. We've got to make it competitive. But no, we're doing some wonderful school spirit things. We're getting a lot of people out to our activities and functions, which is great. Maybe Anthony will drive that float next year. You never know, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I couldn't get, make it there. I have a, I have a dumb question here.
Yes, sir.
Why is Barney on the float?
What's that?
Why is Barney on the float?
It grabs attention for a little. No, Ari was on that float, I believe.
It actually kind of was. We were handing out candy and stuff, throwing them to the little kids and they, they loved the Barney, actually.
Barney doesn't need an explanation.
I'm sorry.
So some other things that we're doing, we're continuing our senior parent recognition for each of the varsity programs that we have. Additional lighting around Beacon High School to help make our evening events a little bit more safe. You'll notice the parking lots are really flowing with those LEDs. That's going to be continuing to the back of the school for the walkways, just to help when we end up with those late evening activities. The crew team, so this was the first year, and I know we've talked about it, that we're able to have a crew team here in Beacon, joining up with Spack and Kill. I actually had the pleasure, so here's one of the crew boats here. I went into the little dinghy that's behind the boat. My first time ever. And we got out there, we were behind about six of the boats that were ready to go out. And apparently when a barge is coming down the Hudson, nobody can go. So we sat in the dinghy for about an hour, 15 minutes till the barge took off. Then the race took off. Just another great opportunity. We are going to continue on with the crew with Spack and Kill this year. I'm hoping that numbers jump. We had about eight students last year that were involved with it. We're looking at some transportation ways that we can assist with getting our students down to the docks, if not every day. Hopefully just a portion of the season to make life a little bit easier, to get more students involved. But that's going to take a little bit more coordination when we get to the spring. But it's certainly something that we're finding value with. And then I think we've talked about, the overall goal is to possibly look at bringing something like that to Beacon down the road. If we get the right people in place that can assist with creating a program like this, which I have very limited knowledge with, but I can tell you, that's a great experience in being down at the docks and seeing the kids out there. You know, it's a very, very positive activity that we're enrolled in. The pep band, so not only were we able to have the pep band at football games, but this is the first time, since I've been here at least, I don't know in the history of Beacon or how that works, but this is the first time our pep band's actually been playing at our varsity basketball games. And Samantha Ryan and her program does a wonderful job supplying the music for all the timeouts in between the breaks. And trust me, I tell her, play as loud as you can. I want to hear you. Anytime there's a break, get the, everything rocking and rolling. We got the drum set there. And it just creates a different atmosphere. And from talking to our athletes, it's almost like it's a college atmosphere when they're in the gym and they're hearing the live music rather than it being on the loudspeakers. So a big shout out to Ms. Ryan doing that. We're hoping to make it a little more official with some uniforms and other things going into next year. Summer school PE credit program, we're going to continue that. We're having a tremendous, tremendous success rate with our students who need additional PE credits when they enroll into those programs. So we're going to keep rocking and rolling with that. Mr. Dwyer and I have already talked about construction that for next year. We're going to continue with our college athletics commitment ceremony, which happens in June. That's for any college or any Beacon High School athlete who's going to commit to play college athletics, you know, after they graduate. Our varsity athletic awards ceremony will be back into the auditorium as we've done last year. It's a great night to celebrate the achievements of our varsity athletes and to give all of our awards, accolades and scholarships. And then in the past couple of years, we've been doing a JV athletic award party, as well as a modified. That's a little bit more informal when we break out the ice cream and we have the coaches in the cafeteria and we let them, it's kind of like the ending of the JV season for them. We do that in June. And then finally, our modified athletic awards party where we go down to RMS and bring everybody in. And once again, just a good celebration of the achievements that we've made here in Beacon. So I know last time we talked about program participation rates. So what I did here is I broke down the fall and winter of this year and I compared it to before COVID, 2019. I thought that'd be a more genuine number to go with. Obviously, we've been trying to work our way up to build our numbers back up. And I'm happy to say, if you see the green, green is good, right? We were able to at least be even with the number of students enrolled. For instance, fall '22 boys, we had 142 enrolled compared to in fall 2019, we had 142 was even. But if you'll see girls, we actually went up in over 18 more students than before COVID. So if you look on the right-hand side, you'll see the total boys participation date of today, total girls, and then overall. And our numbers went up in each of these categories. So we actually have more students enrolled in their scholastic athletics than we did before COVID in 2019. That was once again a five-year goal, just trying to increase enrollment in athletics as much as possible. I think some of this has to, you know, some of this can be accounted for the new programs that we've adopted in Beacon to give more opportunities to students. We were also able to add a couple more teams into our programs, such as JV girls basketball, which started this year, which we haven't been able to have the last couple of years because of numbers. I'm happy to report that next year, we're also planning on having JV girls soccer, which we haven't had in the past couple of years. We're starting to gain more interest and hopefully we can offer these teams, which is once again boosts more students enrolled into our programs. Now the budget increases, which is minimal. So just a couple increases that I wanted to recommend for next year and kind of a rationale of why I'm recommending it. One is going to be the unified, for coaching stipends. On the left-hand side, you'll see an increase of $10,000. And that has to go for coaches' staff stipends for unified sports. We increased the cheerleading stifer to align with all the other varsity coaching stipends. We're also hoping to add a JV cheer team next year if we do have the numbers. And with that, with cheerleading, we're also trying to go into competition next year with cheerleading, rather than just be at the games. They would actually go away and compete with it. Our new coach, Coach Karne Bezos, is doing a wonderful job working with the kids and really getting a lot out of them. And I'm kind of waiting for her to say, all right, let's go with it. That does come at the cost. Our college coordinator budget, we actually increased that for each of the stations. And reason being, we're trying to get to the kids, the kids to the pool more. Last year, I believe everybody was able to go to the high school one time for swimming. This year, our goal is to get everybody from grades one to eight in the pool two times. And we're hoping to just gradually increase that for years to come. It does take coordination efforts when it comes down to not only the programs we're running in the pool, but lifeguard coordination as well. And that's part of the reason why we increased that stifer. And then crew, if we do have more than 10 students enroll in crew, kind of the deal that we have with Spack and Kill, because they are using our pool, is that we would actually supply them with a coaching stifer so that they can service all the students that sign up in their program. Athletic chaperones, we increased the amount of money to have additional announcers and clock workers at our game. We're trying to announce more of our games, not just the varsity, but for JV and freshmen as well. And then safety and security, just making sure that we have enough funds put away to have adequate staffing at our events to keep them as safe as possible. Equipment, we wanted to raise it $10,000, not only to begin purchasing new equipment for the new renovated weight room that we're going to have eventually, but there's also some equipment that needs to be purchased, such as JV football equipment, which we are trying to go back into three football teams next year instead of two. A new wrestling mat, competitive cheer mats, which I found to be very expensive. Athletic trainer equipment, our athletic trainer, Tom Bergman, is always coming out or always presenting new equipment that can service our students better so that they can gain, you know, proper health status going back into events, such as a stim machine, for instance, which can be very costly. And then RMS gym seating upgrades and scorers tables. We wanted to look into purchasing new chairs and the scorers tables for all the athletic events that are happening at the RMS gym. And then finally, athletic supplies. Once again, the weight room equipment, which is not just the big bulky machines, but can also be small things such as medicine balls and different straps and different types of things to keep the weight room safe. JV equipment, once again, and back to cheer, and then spirit equipment. So by spirit equipment, I mean all the beautiful signs and banners and the things that we have hanging around Beacon. That comes with a price, but I think that makes a big difference in, at our, on our school grounds to kind of spruce the place up and to really show off Beacon in the right way. So the overall budget increases, you'll see here, from '22, '23 to '23, '24. So it's looking at an overall increase of $30,000. So, ending up with some current and future initiatives that we have here. Competitive cheer, as I mentioned, which I think would be a great, would be a great program for our student athletes. I think, you know, it's great cheering at the games, the football games, and the basketball games, but that competitive cheer, that's very, very organized, it's very structured, and it has some great benefits. It's, you know, it's going, it's competing against other schools, which we currently don't do. Swimming, K through eight, as I mentioned, two times this year for grades one through eight. We want to start to increase it, and the goal next year is to go three times. According to Coach Green, who is overseeing the swimming programs that we have in Beacon, I guess it's a little problematic to have the students go in the winter, just because when they get out of the pool, they go outside, it can be cold. So, we're just trying to look at the right times to be able to do this and how we're going to fit it in. Additional seating at the BHS Turf, we want to look at increasing some bleachers, not the big grandstands, but some additional seating that'll make viewing our events more enjoyable. That also goes for at the tennis courts. I've talked to Coach Oriani about increasing some seating at the tennis courts for spectators. Also, looking at something like possible pavilion that we can do, like they have a memorial park near the tennis courts, which we feel would be not, nice for not only the players, but for spectators as well, to have some shading. Varsity Team Mentors. So, last year, I presented to the coaches about being a team mentor and basically taking your team and going down to the elementary schools, meeting with different populations that the principals recommended. This year, our varsity cheer team was able to go down and Elvis Act as a mentor team for JBF, to the point where JBF actually created an intermural cheer program, and our girls would go down there and boys for that instance, and would work with those students, not only to do cheer routines and everything else, but acting as a mentor and talking about being positive role models and doing the right thing, so on and so forth. I want to get more of our programs doing that, and I understand it's a little bit difficult during the season because, you know, you're competing and you're practicing. But I think it's really important to get our kids down to these schools, because they are going to be role models for the younger generations coming up. And I think it would be really powerful for, you know, one of our students to walk in with a jersey, or a group of our students to be able to work with some of the youngsters that might be a little bit more guidance. So, that's kind of one of my big goals for next year. The weight room renovations, which we're currently working on. Right now, I'm in the phase of looking at different types of equipment that I think are going to be beneficial for the students that we have and considering the programs that we have. Track renovations, which we're also talking about, which is also underway. And Unified Sports, which was a former three-year goal, is really extending that, trying to boost some more enrollment with that. I want to try to tap into more of our students and get as many of them involved that are willing to do so, just because I feel it'll be a great, genuine opportunity for them. So, to my five-year goals, I always enjoy coming back and looking at this each year, not only to see, you know, how we're doing in progress with that, but if anything needs to be added. I know having moving pictures and everything else is going to be added for next year during the presentation. But every student that graduates BHS has been offered CPR First Aid. I'm happy to say that's going to be resuming this spring in our phys ed classes. So, part of our ninth-grade curriculum encompasses the CPR First Aid certification. So, that's going to resume this year. We had a couple-year layoff, but we're back onto that. Every student that graduates from BHS will develop a personal fitness plan. Once again, that's going to go back to our ninth-grade phys ed class, our ninth-grade phys ed curriculum. Part of that curriculum is going to be teaching the students how to achieve what they want to achieve when it comes down to physical abilities, whether they want to focus on muscular strength, endurance, flexibility, us providing them with the proper information that they can achieve what they want to achieve when it comes down to their actual physical health. A big part of that is also about health and wellness when it comes down to food nutrition. So, the ninth-grade curriculum, as I keep mentioning, I really feel it's paramount to set up, which eventually, we want to do is elective PE classes at Beacon High School. Mr. Dwyer and I have started looking at how we can combine some sections to be able to offer different types of electives. I think it's wise to try to stick with maybe two or three right now, just to pinpoint it. For instance, one would be aquatics, one would be strength and conditioning training, and the other would be sport and game. At least if students had the option to enroll in which class if they wanted to, you know, they can ultimately, you know, benefit from those programs, and then we can start to elaborate, given those different fields. For instance, with aquatics, we can offer something like lifeguarding certification as well and kayaking in the pool if they sign up for that specific program. If you did muscular strength and training, that would be more based out of the weight room and, you know, strength training. And when it comes down to, you know, really getting a proper workout for your sport and activity, so on and so forth. And we are starting to work on that this year and see if we can get it going for next year. And then, finally, being a school of Distinction Award, which is every team being a ninety percent or above GPA, which I think we could do. I think we're going to do. It's a five-year goal. We're going to keep rolling with it, and we're getting close. Then, finally, increase in BHS enrollment, which we talked about, we are doing, but we can always get more and more kids involved in our programs. So, that is everything that I have. Do you have any questions?
I really like the, the girls in sports effort that you're making. I also, number one, I think I may have asked that one year about giving students certification, because, you know, they're, those are marketable skills, so they can get, you know, if they're looking for summer employment or anything like that. The...
Are you talking about, like, a lifeguard training?
Yeah.
That's just CPR First Aid.
No, I know this. Yeah, what I was saying, I said, yeah, I think last year I said CPR, but I also said lifeguards. So, that's my next question. The, the life, I, last, I think there was, the, some, there have been reports of shortage of lifeguard-trained lifeguards and stuff. Have you been, have you been having the same problem? Are you able to teach that class? And not you specifically, but the high school is able to teach that class?
Yeah, we do. And we're, we're really focusing on having students right now who want to go through the course and the certification. It's been extremely difficult to have lifeguards, especially when it comes down to the community usage that we have. It's a little bit different because the time that we offer it, number one, maybe in 5:30 a.m. or 7:00 p.m. And then, also on the weekends, we had to cut out the weekends just because we simply can't staff these areas right now. But it has been difficult. I know that we've just appointed, I think, three in the last three months, students to get involved with it, which is helping. We're also trying to push some of our phys ed teachers who have the certification, who are willing to come help us out within the community. But talking to the city as well, it, it's a difficult thing right now to man these areas.
I think he's asking if there's a course and making the course more accessible so that it would increase the number of people certified students, and then it's something that they can use for a summer job.
Yeah, I know that Michelle, Larry, and the pool promote that to the students within their classes and whatnot, but we can certainly look into making it a larger-scale thing.
Thank you. Thanks.
I have a question.
Yes.
Wouldn't it be possible to install lights around the tennis courts? Because I know for the past two tennis seasons, we've had a lot of issues with busing. And there were times where other schools would be arriving at the courts at like 4:30, and we had to sort of rush our games because we wanted to get as much daylight as possible. And I think it'd also just be great for the community as well, since our courts are open to the public after school hours. So, would that be a possibility at all?
I mean, it's certainly something to look into. From what I understand, it was a little problematic in the past, having, considering lights in that area because of neighbors. But it's certainly something that we can talk about and look into in the future. I don't disagree. They're a wonderful asset to have. And it was horrible when those matches got cut short. That's why we went to a lot of Saturdays, because we're limited with it. But no, I don't disagree. I think that would be valuable, and we can look into it.
All right, one thing, I mean, you can send that to the Facilities Committee. And one thing that we did learn from the turf field is that lighting has changed a lot. So, it can be spotted down. It doesn't do a Blair light anymore that's sort of like, that's what we have around the turf field, our lights that spotlight down and don't disrupt neighbors. So, there, there's lighting that can work for that spot.
Congrat, congratulations on getting the crew up and running this year. What can we do to help? It sounds like you need to get more students involved in it. And by the way, great work collaborating with another school district in the trade-out there. Excellent.
No, I, I think the big limitation right now is transportation, considering that the dock is over at Maris College at Poughkeepsie. So, I think a lot of people, it, it just comes down to management and being able to get there to drop their students off and pick them up. So, I think that's probably the biggest struggle that we have with, you know, making this program really flourish.
Do we do that with a bus, or is it just parents take the kids, or what?
Well, right now, it's the parents taking the kids, because it is a club. We've talked about, we're still going to look into transportation between our buses, but it's been very difficult over the years with being able to, you know, have buses for our regular athletic needs, you know, and anything in addition. It's just going to be difficult. But that seems to be the biggest holdup right now, from what, talking to the community and the students, that seems to be the issue.
John, the, I can't remember the Clarkson. So, Clarkson University, and, which, which is the, what the Beacon Rivers Institute is affiliated with, has a dock in Beacon. They don't, you know, they pull it out over the winter, but they have a, you know, is that a dock that's possible to use?
I don't know.
Okay.
From talking to Spack and Kill Crew Club and what they have, it's a very, very intricate process, not only with docking, but storing the units.
Yeah.
Storing the boats and having the appropriate boathouses and everything else. I guess it's a very expensive endeavor as well. Not to say that we can't do it. I'm just limited on how much I know about what to do with those things.
Yeah.
The facility up there, I've toured it as well. It's, it's extensive.
It's a large boathouse, yeah.
I mean, there's, how many, they fit a lot of boats in the boathouse. Like, it's, it's, it's...
Everybody from Dutchess County goes at it.
Right. It, it would be a bit of an undertaking for us to recreate that, not saying no to it. It's just, it's something that would require a lot of planning.
If we get the right person in play, you know, if we get somebody with that extensive knowledge and knows how to do this, it, I don't think it's, obviously, the river's right here. It's not possible.
Yeah.
But it'll take some, you know, a lot of organization to go into it.
Yeah, you're right. Hopefully, we pick up somebody who knows, who knows the sport and knows the mechanics. I mean, I mean, I, I think, you know, I don't necessarily, I, I don't know, I don't think it's, I think it's difficult, but the, you know, there are trailers and the boats, it's nice when the boat is, is stored at the dock, but there are other options. So, hopefully, we pick up somebody who can understand all those logistics.
Yeah, I agree.
I just had a couple of things. So, growing up with, like, older siblings in the district, definitely seen the changes. So, a big thing, girls in sports. Thank you, Ms. Biorde and Mr. Jimetta. So, that's a big one. The promoting of the sports in general, seeing more people going to the events has been amazing. Working with Student Council, everyone coming together has been really cool, creating, like, weekend events like that basketball game. And then, another thing that just the four of us and Mr. Dwyer have been talking about in terms of, like, leadership involvement, different things, Ari and Harsh can talk a little bit more later. But one thing we looked at was kind of leadership in sports. So, the way our captains work, is there something we could do to kind of give them that extra kind of education? Because there are things people could do on their own. I did a couple of summer things before our season on my own, but I think if it was more widespread, it could be a little bit more beneficial for all of the teams. And then, how the different captains can kind of interact and share what they're doing for their teams. And it definitely proves, I mean, in Mr. Dwyer's presentation, we saw just the way the gym was so much different than other years for volleyball, not just because I was on the team, but I think having a different dynamic definitely contributes to the, like, engagement of the overall team and who wants to watch the games and come to the events. So, overall, leadership education is what I'm asking for, I guess.
Some districts have, it's called like the captains' club, where they gather around with all the captains from each of the teams and talk about initiatives and the whiteouts and the pinkouts and everything else, and how to promote, you know, the overall athletic program. It kind of goes hand in hand with Student Council, but it definitely can be specialized with those captains, and that's certainly something that we can look into. And I think Mr. Newman, being a former coach himself, would be a good person for me to kind of partner up with to get it up and running.
Right. Thank you.
Anybody else? Thanks a lot, John.
It's great.
Great presentations, both of you, Katie and John. Really appreciate it. We have one more presentation, and that's from Anne-Marie Corderoni, our Budget Overview.
That's something I have to work on, too.
It can't be long.
I have to follow these two great presentations. So, mine is very short, because I don't really know a lot yet, but I did want to share with the board what I do know. So, we did get the governor's state aid budget. Well, actually, the whole governor's budget, but the state aid portion. So, Beacon will receive an increase in state aid over last year of $1.4 million. I think it's, you know, it's been out there. The governor talked about fully funding foundation aid. Beacon did get close to $600,000 increase in foundation aid. Other districts got more. So, I'm going to look into that a little bit more. I'm thinking that our foundation aid was probably closest to being fully funded all the years going on. Some districts were not. So, that's a, a good point to start out with. She also talked about fully funding expense-driven aid. So, that's special education costs, that's building aid, that's transportation aid. We saw the major increase was in high cost and excess costs, which relate to added district placements in special ed. So, that's where we saw the increase mainly in our expense-driven aids. And there was $127,000 pre-K increase from last year to this year, which we're researching a little bit just to see how that will impact us. And that's going to be more to follow in that area.
Two questions.
Sure.
The foundation aid, did you see with the increase of the 621 that some was earmarked for tutoring only?
Ours was not earmarked for tutoring, because you had to reach a milestone. So, it had to be more than, had to be $100,000 more than three percent, and ours was at $295. So, some of the districts that got a huge increase in foundation aid had to earmark some of theirs for tutoring. So, Beacon, it was not on the Beacon State Aid run.
And for the pre-K, the hundred, the additional 127, is that tied to a per pupil, or is that an increase on the per pupil cost that they're allocating?
That's a great, that's a great question. I don't know the answer to that. I'm thinking that the cost per student may remain the same. So, before we do anything with pre-K, I wanted to look into how we can fund. I also know that our, we had transitioned to a full-day kindergarten model, and we were limited to the amount of students. I know other districts in Dutchess County that don't have pre-K are actively looking to try to figure out how to start it. So, I need to look into that a little bit more before we make recommendations to the board about what our pre-K program will look like.
Just because I wasn't sure, like, when I was looking at it for the district I work in, I wasn't sure if it was for additional slots, or if they were increasing the per pupil allotment.
The amount per slot.
We'll make sure at the next meeting, we know. I think our assumption is it's, just with the way the state has operated with this, and we've talked about this, that it's probably for additional slots. And this is an issue.
That's the assumption.
Because they should be increasing the, the amount per student, too.
Right. And the other piece, just a preliminary conversation. I did the tax cap calculation. It's due to the state on March 1st. So, just a couple of things. We talk about our tax-based growth factor. We are still in the higher portion of Dutchess County. We're the fourth-highest percentage. And again, that allows Beacon to increase the tax levy by about $770,000. We definitely are at the allowable growth factor of two percent, just based on what our economy is doing right now. So, preliminarily, our estimate of the increase of the levy will be about $1.6 million. And again, there'll be more, I will talk about that more again before I file it at the beginning of March. So, that's just a quick overview. Does anybody have any questions?
And just, we didn't do a slide for this, but just some things on the horizon for the budget process. So, the meetings for the, you know, for the next couple of months are going to be different departments doing the budget presentations like usual. We have four more schools to do the, four more principals do the school presentations. We're also going to be talking about, you know, I've mentioned this before, but we, this would some, this would need to be something on the ballot. We're going to be putting a recommendation together to change our, our bus catchment. Right, you know, a city-school district is 1.5 miles. Those students who live farther than 1.5 miles away from school qualify for busing. We'd like to reduce that to one mile. That's what we're looking at right now, that one mile. It won't be a huge cost increase. In fact, it, it will be pretty minimal, I think, right now, at least the way we're looking at it. That is something we want to discuss with the board. Another future conversation with the board is going to be our capital reserve and, and talking about, you know, moving some money into the capital reserve. So, we'll be better prepared to have that conversation later in the budget season, but we think there's some possibilities there. And we're excited about that, because we set that up last year.
Last year. It was on the vote last year.
Last year. And then, another thing, and this will, we really hope to have this done at the, the Transportation Department budget, which is in March. I can't say the exact date, but just to talk about where things are with electric vehicles, electric buses and all that. So, we're working on all those things and lots of other things, too. too. Uh, for the instructional side of the budget, the student side of the budget, we're really looking at, again, to reiterate, um, academic intervention, strengthening that. Also looking for ways to strengthen, uh, to strengthen mental health supports for students. Uh, we've made a lot of gains with class sizes over the years. We're actually going to be looking at probably making some adjustments there to help, to help offset the costs for everything else. Um, because some of our class sizes at the elementary level have gotten pretty low. And we feel like we can make, um, some adjustments and not make an impact on the student experience. So, uh, we have lots we're working on. We're, we're pleasantly, uh, I don't want to say surprised, pleased. We're pleased with the governor's budget. Uh, and hopefully it will be a somewhat smooth process in Albany, um, so we can get the final information at a time that helps us make plans. Um, but we're feeling pretty good about things right now with the budget.
With, with the increase in the state budget, which it is favorable, I know that the federal funds, the S R and ARP, next summer is the last summer for that, correct?
S R 2 is the last summer is this summer and ARP is next summer.
So some of the reoccurring costs that we may have been using the federal funds for, has there been a plan as to how to start implementing that into the budget since it is a favorable budget? So then we could, um, not look to make a huge increase if we start building it into the budget, some of those reoccurring costs?
Some of the, some of the budget areas, um, the, uh, the, if they were positions, a lot of them were already included in general fund. We just reallocated them to federal. So we were able to do other things in the general fund. So it won't be a, a huge lift. Um, some of the facilities positions, I've already started putting them in, but not everything so that they could be offset by federal stimulus for one more year. So that it's, it's an incremental increase, not a huge hit in one year.
So then if the fed, if the federal monies are being utilized to fund them for this year, that should have a unappropriate fund balance? So we could put that into a capital reserve or a TRS or something like that?
Right. Um, what Matt was talking about a little bit was we did use a lot of, um, unappropriated fund balance last year for the budget. So we were talking more about not using it as much since our state aid went up. Um, and hopefully that it could go up even more. And then use some of that, um, unappropriated fund balance to put in the capital reserve.
Okay.
Actually, I had a question. Matt, you brought up the electric, uh, school buses. Um, and I know we got that letter from the Beacon, City Beacon Conservation Advisory Committee.
Mm-hmm.
If we know when we're going to give that presentation, can we invite them?
Yeah, um, for sure. And we, I started, uh, a reboot of the Sustainability Committee. We met a couple of weeks ago. I think some of the members are on that, uh, committee as well. But yeah, we can for sure put that out there. We have a team in the district, Anne Marie, Deb Call, our Transportation Director, Perry Sheldon, who's our consultant with facilities, Jesse Morrell, our Facilities Director, um, and Tetra Tech is helping us. Uh, so right now, I mean, we've, we've done the infrastructure study with Central Hudson. Uh, right now, we're trying to figure out the financing part, uh, because, you know, it's, it's, uh, there's some things out there, but there's a lot of qualifications to some of it. And we're trying to see what works for us. Um, the bus companies do help guide a little bit, uh, through this. So, um, the, the, our internal group working on this has been very active. They're, they're meeting very frequently. Tetra Tech has been very helpful. Uh, Tetra, a couple of other Tetra Tech's clients are also embarking on this journey. Um, so they, they have a lot of knowledge, um, with it. So yeah, we can certainly put that out.
Are we, uh, in terms of the buses, um, and, uh, our budget going to, out to vote, uh, what are we looking at if we can get a little advance notice here at, uh, what we would need to do for buses in the budget this year? And would that apparently be the time to begin looking at an electric bus or no, do you think?
Yeah. I mean, uh, I think we are looking at a similar, every year we kind of have a similar replacement cycle. We're trying to work on a plan that one of those buses is electric. Um, we were not in a position to just try to do like a full slate of electric. Um, so, uh, Tetra Tech kind of advised us to just start. Um, the financing part is what we're trying to work out right now. There's, uh, one thing that, uh, we're studying to make, to look to see if we qualify for, because we'd, we'd really like to present this in a way, um, that the cost, um, is offset by one of these programs that's out there. Um, we talked about this in the advocacy, advocacy committee before the meeting, but I know my professional organization, Niscus, is really advocating for more direction from the governor on this. Like, I think all school districts are, are wanting some more clear direction from Albany, not just us reporting to them, but some clarity on the financial part especially. Um, so.
This is, this is New York State and clarity and state budgeting is always a.
Right.
A goal to be sought, uh, but never reached in time apparently.
Right.
But so that, when they rolled out this program and established the mandate, they also said there's going to be a, a large pile of money available, uh, but they didn't say exactly when or how or what the rules would be. Do we have any emerging clarity on that? Or is that the kind of thing you're trying to get some?
The, the main one we're looking at right now is the, uh, I label it in my head, it's the Volkswagen lawsuit settlement.
Yes.
That, that became a, a fund source for, um, in New York for school districts to apply. You, you have to have certain, uh, specifications of your current fleet and you have to be trading in one of those vehicles that meets those specifications to get the cost offset. So we're trying to figure out some of the details of that right now. Um, that's the main one we're looking at. One of the ones, I think the EPA one is closed right now. It'll reopen next year. Um, I'm under, I don't want to say an assumption, but like I, I feel there's more to come with that, both from the federal level with the passage of that bill, which the name of the bill kind of escapes me, but the, the bill tackled climate change partly and also like the, uh, the state level, the, it was on the ballot, the, uh,
Yeah.
The referendum.
Yeah, the green.
The, the green referendum in the state level. So, uh, we haven't heard a lot of detail from that part of it, but it's kind of more comes every day. So I think we put the transportation presentation a little bit later in the, just so we would be fully prepared for that.
We might have to wait until around April 1 or whenever they finalize the state budget to see some more of those details.
Right. Right.
Any other questions for Anne Marie?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, are there any comments from our student school board representatives?
Um, so I just wanted to give a little bit of an update on an opportunity that some of us high school students were able to go on last week. I had mentioned briefly, I think in the last board meeting about, uh, leadership conference that we're going to be attending. So last week, Harsh and I, we had the most amazing opportunity to attend the leadership conference in Washington DC. And we attended the conference with the other, um, National Honor Society officers as well as, um, Ms. Kason from Sergeant. Um, it was a great experience. And while we were there, we were able to meet students from several different states across the country and different countries like Honduras and Guam and, um, Puerto Rico, Mexico. There was a lot of students there. Um, but we were able to make a lot of great connections with them and share some experiences from our respective schools. And we also attended panel discussions where we learned like how to build our leadership skills, creating club connections and avoiding, how to avoid and resolve conflicts within our clubs. Um, but overall, we learned a lot of valuable information that we're really excited to hopefully implement into the high school. Um, we also got to see a lot of cool monuments and stuff in DC. So that was great. Yeah.
Awesome.
Who's next?
Anybody else have any comments they want to share?
Yeah, I think we're good.
You're good. Um, I wanted to let you know that I reached out to Jamie, James Flynn, I think is his name. Um, uh, Harsh gave me the contact information of a, he's a principal in New Jersey who, um, gave, I think he gave a presentation on leadership there while you were there. And he, um, gave me a nice pep talk about our DCC struggle. Um, and he kept saying, well, what about this? And I was like, oh, we already did that. We already did that. But actually he, it did remind me that we've had some successes along the way. We haven't gotten exactly what we want, but I think that's one of the most important things to remember. Um, when you're in a struggle like this is that, you know, there, you have to look for those small successes along the way. Um, but as long as we're talking about DCC, uh, I did want to let everyone know that there's, um, there's a county legislature meeting on the ninth and on the 14th. I'm planning to go to the meeting on the 14th. I'm happy to bring any students who want to come. Are you, you're interested? Okay, great. Um, and we'll participate in public comment there. I would just, um, reiterate the letter that we've already, um, agreed on as a board, but mostly I would like to give our students an opportunity to speak. And if there's anyone else, or if you have friends, they certainly don't have to be part of, um, the board that want to come. I think the student voice will be the most powerful thing that we can, uh, bring there. So.
Well, DCC has, um, agreed to cut the amount that students who qualify for free and reduced lunch, um, in half.
Actually, it's a third. Is, or is it?
It's a third, but it's not, uh, no, it's a third. It's 20-something as opposed to the 60-something.
Okay, third.
But it's not qualify. It's who.
Apply.
Have, are in the pro, the free and reduced lunch program.
Right, right, right.
Which is an important differentiation.
Right. Oh, third.
So, yeah, we'll, I mean, we'll make sure we have the latest.
They haven't given it to us in writing, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You'll have to add that to your meeting next week, Corey. I think the high school's having a meeting on DCC next week?
Well, yeah, for, uh, next Wednesday, uh, 10 to 11 grade students and parents. Uh, we're just going to kind of give it a page to them. And then we'll probably go in and talk to those students directly.
So hopefully we'll have.
So you're having that on the 15th after the county legislature meeting?
Well, there's, there's two meetings. Oh, yeah, they're both after. Or that, this meeting is after.
The, the high school meeting would be.
Yeah, after, after. Okay, great. Thank you guys. Nothing else? Sure?
Thank you for coming.
Yes. Can I have a motion to, um, for the Board of Education to move to executive session to review the employment history of a particular individual and to discuss attorney-client advice? And the board will return in about 25 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Anthony, second by Flora. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight to zero. We're gonna resume with the superintendent's report.
We, we were going to talk about the budget a little bit and we did that earlier. So I'm just going to, uh, make a very, really brief update. I started the superintendent community conversations last week, uh, one at the high school and one at Ramout. I am visiting Sergeant Elementary Wednesday, and the rest of the dates are, uh, online. At the end of it, early March, uh, I'll be doing one on Zoom as well, just for people who weren't able to make it and really want to see me on Zoom, like the good old days. So, uh, but the conversations have been great. Lots of great questions. Uh, we are talking about the strategic planning process and where we are with that. We're talking about the capital project and getting into detail for each school and then, uh, talking about the budget process. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Fourth comments. Kristen?
Uh, it was really great to see the, um, elementary school presentation for Sergeant tonight and the athletics presentation. Really informative. Thank you so much for all the detail and work. Um, I do not, do we have a date for when we are doing our next facilities meeting?
Well, that's a great question.
Usually do it.
Third Thursdays is sort of what we had been.
Yeah. Just want to confirm with everybody.
So should we try to have one on the, um, I guess that would be the 16th?
Ooh, what am I, 16th? Can we tentatively schedule and then confirm that date is like standing out for me for reasons?
I want to be there.
It will not be.
What about the 23rd? Is the 23rd better for anyone, everyone?
That's the family night at Sergeant.
Okay.
Uh, well, Craig, are you, I mean, should we try to?
Well, Anthony already can't make it. So if you, if there's a chance you can't make it, then we don't, we can't have it. So.
Thursdays are like impossible for me.
Oh, is that a new?
No, it's always been. It's, I haven't been there. Unless earlier on at night.
What night is possible for you?
Mondays, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, except for the third Wednesday.
Okay.
The Tuesday is the county legislature meeting that you wanted to attend. That's the 14th.
Yeah.
It's also Valentine's Day, but you can have heart-shaped cookies or something at the meeting.
Uh, right. Yeah, no, I, I want to go to that meeting.
If you started later at eight, I could be there.
Okay.
Well, you said Thursdays were impossible.
We're trying to do doubleheader of audit and facilities for those meetings.
Can we do audit earlier then?
Are you not on audit?
He's on audit, too.
Yeah.
He's on audit as well.
How'd you let us schedule them for Thursdays then if that was always impossible? I know, but I'm saying that we decided that we would follow the, the existing schedule of Thursdays. But if that's impossible, then we should really look at changing the reg, the regular.
I think in general, yeah, we need to.
Current date so that you can be there. Because those are the two that you're.
Well, that's what I said when we last were looking for a date. I said I could make it if it was at eight o'clock, but we went with seven. And I, I've been vocal, I stated I can't make Thursdays. Thursdays are like impossible.
So you, you said Monday, Monday Tuesday, Wednesday, or the, what, can we?
Any other Wednesday but the third Wednesday.
Uh-huh. I mean, uh, I mean, it's too, it's too soon to try to pull something together for this Wednesday, right? We would, you haven't had like a regular.
I can't do this Wednesday.
Let's try.
I could do next Wednesday, but that's the third Wednesday. So Anthony can't do it. What about the 22nd, Wednesday, the 22nd?
I mean, normally yes, but that's Jeff's birthday.
Wednesday, the 22nd?
Um, what about?
I mean, if you, if you know you can make it, that would be just a one-off for me that I can't make it because of a family thing. But if you know you can make it and you could have quorum, then.
Fourth Wednesday.
Yeah.
The 22nd? It's fine.
Okay. Do you want to, do we need, um, the architects at that meeting? Or this is just going to be a, a general facilities meeting?
I think we could have a general meeting.
So I'm going to put it in the calendar for audit and facilities on, uh, February 22nd, Wednesday.
22nd?
Yeah.
Okay, starting.
Time's starting at seven.
Starting at seven?
Seven to nine, yep.
Seven to nine, okay.
And to check with our volunteers to see if they can make it.
Should we start with audit or what?
I think that's nice for them.
Yeah, for them.
Okay. So that would be at, at seven, right?
Yep.
And then, uh, facilities at eight?
Yep.
If necessary, we can yield time to the, uh, one committee or the other. Do we have any guests?
Yeah, neither one is a big meeting because for audit, we would basically just be going over any reports that we have.
Well, I think we wanted to have a more of a longer range planning kind of discussion, too, for audit. But, um, I'm just wondering if we have any, any guests for either of these committees where we need to schedule with, uh, somebody?
Um, we're right at the very beginning of the HR, um, review. So they just started getting documents. They won't be on site until then, that day after.
Why don't we, for that, Craig, then you, you're the chair of that, right?
Yeah.
So for the long-term planning thing, why don't, can we send an email out to everybody once we confirm, if you're confirming the volunteers can make it for that night instead of the Thursday night, then maybe we also come up with kind of like a homework that we can all think about, our top three concerns in terms of planning. And maybe let them know that they can watch the meeting with Anne Marie presenting where the budget is so far and hearing some of the questions about like the, the grants that are sunsetting and things like that. That way they'll think about it ahead of time. It won't be a, the meeting won't, will run more efficiently because people will come prepared.
We will need to get in touch with the two volunteers on audit and finance to see if they can, uh, dissipate one way or the other.
Right. So can you do that, Craig?
I will contact them.
Okay, great. Okay. So let's see if that works. Kristen, you done?
Yes.
John?
Uh, no comment.
Eunice?
No comments.
Anthony?
Good evening. Um, the Equity Committee met last on the 24th of January and, um, put considerable work on drafting a, a new policy, uh, Policy 0105 on diversity, equity and inclusion. Uh, that's not the right title for it, but it's kind of close. Yes. So, uh, thank you very much, Saggy. Equity, inclusion and belonging. So, um, so we will, um, once the draft is, uh, finished, we're going to send that to the Policy Committee. we're going to send that to the Policy Committee, which brings me to the Policy Committee report. So we, uh, so far, we only have, um, three policies that we're looking, uh, that's on the docket to look at. So it wasn't a, we didn't think it was enough to, to call a Policy Committee meeting yet. It was the minutes, which is Policy Two-Three-Six-Zero, Policy Two-Three-Four-Zero, which is a notice of minutes, and Policy Two-Three-One-Zero, which is the regular meetings, policy and regular meetings. I kind of heard that, um, um, the Policy Committee also wants to look at, um, Policy Fifty-Six-Ninety-Five, which is about electronic equipment, which includes the cellphones. And then we can add Policy One-Zero-One-Zero-Five to that, to that list of policies to review then and call a policy meeting. The, the equity policy's gonna be, um, it, it's a, it's, it's very, um, a lot of details in there. So it may be something that may take us a couple of sittings, I guess. So, um, so, uh, hopefully we could circulate it to the Policy Committee with enough lead time to review it.
Yeah, okay. So, but we're waiting to put something on the calendar?
Yes.
Okay, great, thanks for the update. Anthony?
Sure, I'd like to thank John and Katie for their presentations. It's nice to see the long history that John has had and how he's been completing the three and five-year goals that he had. And it's nice to hear how Katie, uh, Katie has jumped right into her first initial year and is, uh, addressing the culture. I just wanted to make the board aware that I am drafting a letter for the PRL Committee. It's an advocacy letter that I'm gonna really focus on. The increase of the foundation aid for three percent annually. Making sure that the state knows that even with the governor's run, that it would increase for, for three. I think that would be something good to advocate for. Fully funding UPK, decoupling APPR. And then there's some other things that I'm just looking at to see if we can add that would be smaller, that we could add to it. But I'll send it to the whole board, but I'll send it to the, um, PRL Committee to see if they want to make any adjustments to it.
That's fantastic. We could also maybe use some of that for resolutions as well, if we want to consider that for the year.
Yeah, and for our, I mean, if you want to just, I don't know, when you thought you could get the letter done, but we're gonna go, uh, Flora and I are planning to go up for lobby day.
The fifteenth.
On the fifteenth.
I should have it done by then.
Okay, great. So you can use that there then too. Great, thank you. Craig?
Guess we already covered it, thank you.
Okay. Flora?
I just wanted to say off the beginning, I wanted to correct myself on the DCC tuition. So it's a third, you were right, Matt. It's a third of the total tuition that they're charging, sixty-four. But then for students who are on free or reduced lunch, it's fifty percent. So it's actually even more than I had originally quoted. So it would be, like, they would be paying thirty-two. Which is, um, you know, uh, there was a lot of talk at the Dutchess County School Board's Administration Meeting, which happened last week, about what to do next. There's a lot of talk about advocating on the county level. And that there may be some willingness there to, to work with districts on this. And so we're, we're talking with people, um, and other districts about next steps. It's also something that we're going to bring up, um, when we go to Albany on the fifteenth. I wanted to let everybody know the things that we are thinking about discussing. Clarity on electric buses, uh, universal school meals, which they recently had a lobby day up in Albany for. Um, and there is a big, um, sort of push, uh, to, to fund that at the state level. And some people seem to think it's possible, so we're, we're, we're gonna advocate for that. And then, um, the pilot, uh, the, um, this is based on, you know, what we were told by our attorney earlier about advocating to pass a law or, um, to clarify or asking the Commissioner of Tax and Finance to issue a regulation that the commercial development of tax-exempt properties would be accounted for in a positive manner in the calculation of the tax levy growth factor that is used to assess the cap, tax cap. You know, obviously wanting to sort of talk through that and, and if there's a possibility that the governor would consider that. Or if local legislators can, can help move us forward on that. And then, um, I think that's it, the, for, it was those four issues. But if there's anything else that you would like to see us talk about or, or bring up for, for the lobby day with state legislators, please let us know. Either we could talk about it now, or you could email us.
About the, uh, the pilot.
Yeah.
There were several amendments to that law, apparently, but none of them touched upon the one that we're concerned about, which is the impact of pilots on the tax levy calculations. But I thought I saw something in one of the communications from NISBA in the advocacy, uh, letters, uh, that talked about, they were thinking about doing something about that. And I, I don't know of anything that ever came of it or whether there's something that's still on somebody's table. Have you been able to find anything out about that? Like, is there some action going on already about that?
I don't know if there is at this point. I mean, it's definitely something that we could bring up during the Capitol Conference, maybe. It's a question that might be worth asking. And that's virtual, it's on the tenth. I don't know if anybody's registered to go, but I'm, I'm gonna go.
I'm planning to.
Okay.
I'm hoping to.
Okay.
Done it?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just leave you hanging. Yeah, I'm done.
Okay, great, thanks. And, um, I wanted to let the board know that, um, this feels a little backwards, but I did testify, um, I read the redistricting letter that we had approved over email to the redistricting committee. There were many, many people, um, testifying. It went on for, I think, like, three and a half hours. And there were some emphatic nodding from some of the committee members when I was reading, so hopefully we are getting heard there. Thanks for your help with that over email. And I was connected to Justin Glenda, who is with Related Affordable by Councilmember Rhodes. Related Affordable is who is in charge of this pilot, or this renovation at Tompkins Terrace. And they are, originally, they were applying for a pilot through DCIDA. But for reasons I'm actually not totally clear on, the city is now doing kind of like a personal pilot for them. There, they've been talking about it the last several city council meetings. I've, I haven't watched all of them all the way through, but you can, there's a lot of detail there. I highly recommend it. They don't need anything from us, they're not asking for a letter of support or anything. But I did get some details from, um, from Justin Glenda about, uh, what this will look like and particularly for our families who will be impacted. And I put him in touch with Matt in terms of busing that will need to be redone. He said that, um, families will not be out of the, their homes for more than, um, I think a month at the longest is what they're saying. But we want to, we want to make sure that we can, you know, ease that impact as much as possible. If there are questions for him, uh, you know, you can email him directly. I can provide you with his, with his email address. Or if you have questions for the city, we can, we can, I can be the liaison if you want, or you can contact them directly. But it does, uh, the one thing that was repeated many times during the meeting is that this will protect, um, affordable housing at Tompkins Terrace for the next forty years. I, I don't, I have not dug into the details there yet, so, um, I think it's, it's probably worth reading the fine print.
I just have something to add to my board comments.
Oh, sure.
So I had it in my minute, um, my notes for the last meeting, but the state has approved the ten percent tax, uh, deduction for active firefighters that have been active for two years as well as EMS. I was wondering if that was, be something that we could discuss and maybe get information on how that would impact if we did look at approving that as the school board?
Sure.
We, it came up during, uh, the advocacy meeting and I'll, I'll work with Emery to put together kind of like a timeline for the board to think about it. I know other Dutchess districts are.
Thinking about it.
Oh, you need people so they can live in the community if they're an active firefighter? I don't understand.
So if they're an active firefighter or EMS and they've been active for two years or more, they would be able to receive a ten percent.
Okay.
Tax break.
Similar to the veterans' tax break.
Yeah, I think it's for the volunteer firefighters.
Correct.
Yes, exactly.
Oh, okay.
Or, or first responders, yeah.
Yeah. So I had it at the last board meeting, I forgot to bring it back up.
That's really, that's, uh, that's great.
So, I mean, I think we need information before we make a decision, but maybe that's why I was asking if there could be consensus of the board to get information as to.
Absolutely.
What would be the maximum amount? Like, what, how could it impact the district to the maximum? And then, you know, make a decision whether or not we could go forth with it or not.
I, I did ask NISBA if they had something about that, and they said they did not.
They didn't have any information, or they didn't have like an opinion?
They didn't have a fact sheet or something.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, so.
Okay. Yeah, it sounds like there's a, there's, I don't know, Matt was saying that, that some people are saying that it, it had been difficult to figure out how to, um, implement it, how to, how to verify.
Yeah, there's like challenges around confirmation.
There is, I think a lot of, like, uh, towns and school boards are having the chiefs certify that they're active firefighters or EMS. And, and the chiefs would have to sign off on it and stuff.
Yeah, yeah, what I've heard is that there's, um, wh- while, while New York State made it legal to do so, I mean, there's, there could be quite a few, quite a bit of, of, uh, varied requirements depending on the tax district. So the city could do, could make it look like one way, and the school district could make it look a different way. And that's what makes it confusing. But it's just a matter of what we want to do, right? And then, um, whether or not, you know, fo- folks that move into the area, if they're, if they volunteered somewhere else, do we want to give them credit for it? So there's a bunch of other menu options to pick from to see what we want to apply here. I do have a, um, uh, I did view YouTube, a lawyer who's, who, um, who we use at the ambulance corps. He had, he, they, one of his, uh, folks in his firm put out a, um, a video that kind of explains a little bit of that. I could forward that to, to the board if that's.
That would be great. Thanks, Anthony.
Okay.
Um, I put it on my.
Thanks for bringing it up.
List for future agenda and.
And I'm fine with that. I'm just asking, so when we have the discussion, if we can have the information, if the board could come to consensus, say, hey, Emery, can you put this together for us?
Right, that's what I'm, I mean, it sounds like there is consensus.
We'll have to get a sense from, like, the fire chief about, like, the, the number of people, even if it's an estimate.
Yeah. Yeah, so I don't know if it would be, we'd be ready to talk about it at the next agenda, but.
Right. We'll start working on it.
Okay.
So Matt, Matt, just to let you know, so the, the school district encompasses City of Beacon Fire Department, Lenham Fire Department, Dutchess Junction, yeah, so, and, and, um, Chelsea, part of Chelsea, so. Right. I mean, it's more than one fire chief to reach. And then you only have one voluntary ambulance corps also in the, in the district.
Right.
Okay, so we're moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is nine point oh-one, approved resolution regarding Mirabou in NSPA. The letter from the president is actually a public, uh, in the public content. So I do think. But it is not the same, it is not, um, it's not the side letter. That we have questions about the language. So I still think we can approve.
So that letter would be, be accompanied by another letter?
That's what I'm not, I'm not completely clear on.
Or would it be an addendum to that letter?
I'm sorry. It must not be signed in, I don't see the exact.
So the letter of support is in the public?
The, the, the letter of support is in the public, but the, um. Oh. No, it's not. I, I'm not sure what.
Wait, the letter's right here. Right?
Yeah, that's right, but when I sign it, I don't see it in the public content.
That's interesting.
Is the proposed letter in the, on the public agenda?
I'm signed in.
I see side, approved side letter of agreement in the public agenda.
Try and refresh and clear your cache and see if that exists. Vicky, do you know if we would?
The letter of support is in the public content.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah, we, I'm seeing it.
Okay. There you go. So, um.
Wait.
But that's not what we wanted to amend, like, the, that's art, that's Dan's language.
Oh, I see what you mean. You mean.
But is Dan's language accompanying the letter of support?
Yeah, I mean, the letter of support is, I think we're fine with. It's the, it's the agreement around the Community Benefit Fund that we have questions about.
So can we say that we're approving the letter of support with the stipulation of?
I would just say, um, if you can see the school leadership authorizes the board president to send a letter in support of Mirabou with amendments and/or addendums that are needed after consulting with the board's attorney.
So are we amending that section of the?
With a possible, right, I would say, like, where it says now therefore.
So we vote for, to amend that, that, does somebody need to pull it and then? Or we haven't pulled it, we're talking about it right now?
Talking.
Yeah, we're talking about it. So, sorry, my, I, my board docs is acting really weird.
Here, do you want to just?
I've got the, I've got this up now. I just don't see any of the exact content.
Oh, yeah, because it's all in the, in the executive section.
I think to be clear to the public, what, what we're doing is we want to continue with a letter of support for the Mirabou. However, you know, there are, in the letter of support and/or documents that would accompany the letter of support, there is language that we need clarity on from the board, from the board's attorney.
Yeah, we're just, all, all we're trying to do is, um, make sure that the side letter of agreement includes a table, um, a, a payment structure table that, 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 um, that pulls out the community fun, benefit fund from the original pilot agreement. And the, the table that they provided does not. So.
With clarity that if the, wasn't there, that it, it's not up to, but it could be above.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
With clarity on that piece.
If there's a change in the assessment or the tax rate.
Right.
That the, the payment would change accordingly.
So.
The pilot payment.
And we would not be, we would not be held to what was listed in that schedule up to that.
Correct. So for the recommended action, I would say that I would want to give the board president the flexibility with working with the board attorney to possibly amend and/or add an addendum to that language based after she meets with our attorney.
In the side letter.
In the side letter.
Yeah.
Okay. So do we say so moved on that?
That was actually pretty good.
Yeah, that was good. You still had a bit in there?
I have, uh, Vicky rewatched that part of the, I, I think that was very well said, I don't.
She's giving us two thumbs up.
Okay, great, thank you, Vicky. So can I have a motion for the, or can I have a second for Anthony's motion?
Second.
Kristen, um, are there comments or questions? And I just want to reiterate what's happening here. So we have this resolution here.
Ready to go.
Ready to go, that is agreeing to provide a letter of support for the pilot that, um, that Mirabou Spa has applied for. They, and, um, but in addition to the original pilot agreement, we have asked for them to establish a Community Benefit Fund. They have agreed to do so. And so, um, this is all subject to just clarifying the terms of the Community Benefit Fund. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm also in favor, passes eight to zero. I want to thank the board for their work on this. I think it was a really productive conversation.
We did the amendment to it, now we have to pass it.
Oh, sorry. Okay, so can I have a motion to approve the resolution regarding Mirabou in NSPA?
So moved. Second.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Also am in favor, passes eight to zero. Thank you for the work on this, I think it was really productive. Our next item is nine point oh-two, which is, um, creating a, an ad hoc committee to discuss changing the name of our holiday currently called Columbus Day.
Do you want me to talk about our proposed outline?
Yes, that would be great.
And then I will, I will give this to you so that you can include it and just, so it's in the minutes. But, um, so basically. But, so basically, we talked about this at the PRAU meeting. And the basic plan is that we are going to limit it to nine participants, I believe it was, with, including two student participants. It's gonna be, there, there will be outreach from Matt asking families if they would like to participate. And then if we get an abundance of people who want to participate, there will be sort of a lottery system in order to, to decide who is, who attends the, or who is part of the committee. And, you know, trying to maintain a balance between the points of view. The idea is that they will meet three times total, so once a month in March, April, and May, and followed by a board discussion in June. The superintendent will be the moderator. This, the discussions will include a short list of resources that all members of the committee will read and discuss. There will also be agreed upon norms for the meeting, which are TBD. And everyone will get a chance to speak about why they do or don't support a name change. Once the committee has made their recommendation or recommendations, the board can accept or reject the recommendation or recommendations of the committee. And I think the, yeah, and the first meeting will be in March and then the discussion will be in June. So that's the, the outlines of it so far. Have I missed anything or misspoken?
The only, no, that, that's very accurate. The only thing I think that you didn't say, or at least I missed if you did, was that in order to create a balanced board or a balanced committee, we would ask committee members what their current opinion was.
Yes.
In a Google form. To create a, a balanced committee.
Right. Right. There would be a sort of a Google form asking, asking people.
How do you do that with a lottery, though? Are you gonna have two lotteries?
Yeah.
Yeah. You would separate them out, yeah.
And if they have no opinion?
Well, then they probably won't wanna go.
We, yeah, we just got somebody who wants both.
Well, that, that is his opinion.
Yeah.
He wants, he wants it to change to.
Yeah.
That is a change in itself.
Oh, okay. So they would be in the change category?
Yeah. Exactly.
Well.
I don't think the balancing can probably be done perfectly, but I think we'll try to form it with the intent of balance, and I think we will achieve it. But I, I don't intend to run the committee like it's gonna be a vote or a majority thing. I want the committee to at least work on coming to make a recommendation or recommendations, plural, to the board. So I, I'll, I think we'll be able to navigate that part, the formation. I, you know, everything from the public comment and the, all the emails that we received, I really, really strongly believe that having multiple viewpoints on the committee is important, just like we view it in the classroom. And so I, I think we can handle that.
Yeah.
Pretty well.
And Flora, you said about the resources, that there's gonna be a small amount of resources. Like who's picking the resources?
So I think that's gonna be a mix of things that were sent to the board regarding the, the name change. I mean, there are some resources that were sent there. And then I think, Matt, you said you were gonna pull some stuff together. What?
Yeah, I'll take a look at what's come in from the different groups and we'll put like a reading list together from that, honestly. And if people, once the group meets, if someone wants to add something to it, I'm happy to do that, too.
So first meeting would be basically sort of establishing all that. Second meeting would be, and, second meeting would be talking about the reading and also talking about what we do with our curriculum within the district. And then the third meeting would be sort of coming to it.
Why are we talking about the curriculum in the district if it's just a name change of a holiday?
Well, I, I mean, it's a name change of the holiday within the district, only for the district.
Yeah, but you said changing the curriculum.
No, no.
You said the curriculum.
No, just hearing what, how, how it is taught in our district.
Yeah, 'cause we.
So I mean, that's a lot deeper than just looking at a name change. If we're looking at the curriculum and gonna be looking to adjust the curriculum.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not asking to adjust the curriculum. I'm asking for the, for the committee to hear what the curriculum is.
What's already going on. Anthony, for example, I, I got a letter directly to me. I'll forward it to everybody else. It was a while ago. I don't think everybody else got it. But someone had said that, that they felt that this focus on the Columbus Day holiday gave them sort of misimpression that, that the information was not, that there was nothing being taught about indigenous cultures. And she felt that like her child itself had received this really great overview of, you know, tribes and really learned and, you know, had this, had this experience where they felt like it was, you know, like very balanced and current and in line with facts. And so that, that in some ways, like a lot of the comments we received in favor of changing the name were with the assumption that, that Columbus was being taught in the same way maybe it was when we were kids. And that was kind of a piece of information that, you know, that was, she felt was missing from the discussion, that it's actually in alignment probably with New York State standards and is much more nuanced than what we grew up with. And that, that people who were coming, maybe who didn't even have kids in the district really didn't understand that. So just having a baseline understanding of this is how we talk about these issues in our curriculum might be helpful.
It, it did come up with people that came to the podium.
Well, that was one of the concerns I had is if it was addressing a holiday name change, why are we gonna be talking about curriculum? And a lot of people that did come up were saying, you know, how they thought that this name change would change the curriculum, right? Or it could be a pathway to help change the curriculum. And so if we're putting a committee together to just look at the name as it is on a calendar, you know, like, we have, we hold the curriculum piece. Like if we wanna look at the curriculum, that's a totally separate.
It's not an assessment. It's looking at it in a larger context. And the context is the curriculum is also changing, right? I mean, isn't that what we're saying?
Curriculum is also changing?
No, because the curriculum, since we've been kids, yeah.
Yeah, but I think that's where we're doing curriculum apps and so forth, right? I mean, we don't even have curriculum apps.
Anthony, I, I think you're, you're totally misunderstanding. We would like a report from the, from Segrerio about what, how it is being taught in our district.
Right. To correct any misconceptions that might be out there.
Recommendations back to her, but so that we can take it as part of the context of our decision making.
Right. That's what, yeah, that's a better way.
I think some of the, some of the common readings probably should come from the classes that teach it. So I'll reach out to those teachers, too.
Yeah.
Seventh grade and ninth.
If we just use the sources we were sent, I, I think we should have some sort of standard for what makes it in because I read everything that we were sent. And I don't think a lot of them are, would pass a certain standard of like citation and historical accuracy. And so I, I don't know. Like I think that it's not that, yeah, I think that we can certainly, if anything does meet those standards, we can keep it. But I don't think we should take anything that, like some of the stuff was highly discredited. That, like when I went and looked at it and then looked at, like, information.
I think, I think a good place for us to start with the readings is what are our students reading?
Yeah.
Again, not as, this isn't, I understand, I understand the charge of the committee. It's to look at the name change.
What would be in line with what's in the district?
I think the curriculum pieces could help us with the reading part. And I've spoken with seventh grade social studies teachers, not in great depth, but also high school teachers who teach it. And, you know, they, they look at, they look at primary source materials. They look at his journals, like, and I know in seventh grade, one of the teachers does the, the trial where students both try to prosecute and defend him. Like, so I think, honestly, I think looking, having the committee look at what our kids are processing may be one of the biggest helps with all this. So I'll gather that together. And, I mean, just not to get too, maybe just stating the obvious, but we're gonna be adopting the calendar before this committee is done, just to be clear. So, so, 'cause we're working on next year's calendar right now. So our hope is that gets adopted. I think we do that sometime around spring break. But I, I, I also, I don't, I'm not, I'm a realist about my own self. I'm not putting together a three-ring binder with 200 pages of reading like this. We're gonna get to the point with this and not overburden people.
Are there any other questions or comments about the proposal?
I, I support the proposal. I'm just not clear how, how, how the facts will be vetted. I mean, or, or are we not vetting facts and that the committee, that's not one of responsibilities?
You just said that, that there, we're going to use, that we're gonna start with how it's taught in the district, which presumably would meet a certain standard of fact since it's aligned with New York State standards.
Okay.
I mean, I think it's important to read some of the things that we were sent through the email, too, just to understand why people believe what they believe. You know, I think that that, so if through that someone wants to say this is not factual and here's the, here's the reason why.
Well, the, the, the history of the holiday is important. Kristen, you spoke about it a couple of board meetings ago with the research that you did. I don't think most people know that. We'll make sure that's part of the committee part. I, my former district, I was the principal in Virginia, Charlottesville, Virginia, with what happened there in 2017. They've gone through a number of sort of community projects. And one is they've looked at the names of many of their schools, and they've renamed some of their schools based on what they've learned. One of the schools I was the principal of was renamed. And based on what they learned about who the school is named after. And so, you know, they have a process in place where they have a committee. The committee doesn't meet forever. It meets for a fin, you know, finite amount of time like us. They do a common set of readings. There's lots of different viewpoints. The committee makes a recommendation or a couple of recommendations to the superintendent. I'm gonna be more hands-on with this and be a part of the committee, but we'll be doing that with the board. And, you know, I, I, like, you know, we're always making, we're always refining curriculum and whatnot. But this is, this is, this will be very focused on how we label it on our school calendar.
Right.
Period.
That's all it is, right? Yeah, the, there's a sergeant parent who works at the Hamilton Fish Library or the Desmond Fish Library. And I think they're undergoing a review of their name with reference to certain facts that have come to light about Hamilton Fish and his involvement in trying to align with the, of like the Nazis.
Yep.
During.
Yep.
During, and, and like overthrow our government and impede our efforts to, I guess. There's like a bunch of stuff that, like it was revealed through like an investigative podcast, but they're, they're kind of dealing with this right now and how they are gonna go about like looking at that. And they've formed a committee to do this, a similar.
Right.
Thing. That's more, I think that's more complicated than what we have going on 'cause they're probably endowed by that family. But it is current.
I, I do wanna say that I, I, I am, I am reading the information that, that being sent to the board. And I want as far as contacting the Library of Congress to see if they can hopefully clarify some of this. And I got four of the references now that I don't know how, if I have time to read. But, you know, it just keeps, it keeps getting deeper.
I have a concern about the, the title calling it the Holiday Name Change Committee. That kind of prejudges the outcome, doesn't it? Saying you're going to change the name? Couldn't we just call it the Holiday Name Committee?
That's fine.
Review.
Review? Something like that? That's sort of.
Sure, that's fine.
Prejudges.
Yeah.
Sure.
So is review okay? With, do you feel that that's more neutral?
Make it what?
Holiday Name Review Committee?
Yeah, that, that sounds better. Yeah.
Any other?
My, the former district I was talking about where I was the principal, they call it the School Naming Review Process. So I think that.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I like that.
Yeah, 'cause it may come up in the future about something else.
Yeah. Okay. So can I have a motion to approve forming the Holiday Name Review Committee?
So moved.
Flora, second by, second, Eunice. Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm also in favor, passes seven to zero, or eight to zero, sorry. Moving on, this is sort of retroactive, but can I have a motion to add the redistricting letter to the agenda for vote?
So moved. Second, third.
That was a, I think, motion by Craig, second by Anthony.
Yeah.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Also in favor, passes eight to zero. Can I have a motion to approve the redistricting letter?
So moved.
Second.
Anthony, Flora, with the second. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna say thank you for all the work you've put into this. It's really been.
Mm-hmm. Go ahead.
Oh, thanks. Flora?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight to zero. Consent agenda. The use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate, and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on an issue. Are there any items that any board members would like to have pulled from the consent agenda? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve 11.01 through 1507?
So moved.
Second.
Anthony, second by Kristen. Comments or questions?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment for Cindy Primarico's retirement on here. She's been a stable employee of the district and she's impacted many kids. And she's always did it with a smile on her face. So I know that I will sorely miss her here.
I will also really miss her. I hope she keeps on tweeting after she retires. She's my favorite tweeter.
Definitely positive influence on my kids, too.
Yeah. She will be sorely missed. And also with gratitude for the donation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I am also in favor, passes eight to zero.